We're going to start with proposed ordinance number one, the new proposed ordinance number one packet that we just received today that we put in committee last night. It's the small group.
Same thing we did yesterday.
Okay. I thought we were starting with the new ones.
These are the new ones.
There's one through 57 and then behind number 57.
So you want to talk about the...
There's none.
Okay, so we're starting with that one. Thank you. Okay.
This regard.
So we're starting with the marriage fees?
Smith.
Thank you.
Councilman, last one, please go ahead with this one. This is the city clerk. Marriage fees from $9,500 to $17,500, $8,000 now with change.
Sure, so I just, I think the explanation is self-explanatory. Doubling the cost based on last year's average and it brings it up to $8,000. I kind of gave about a $1,500 leeway for the marriage fees. They haven't been updated in quite some time.
I didn't see, there's not a price in there. It's 10 to 20 or...
Yeah, it goes from 10 to 20.
Charlie, go ahead.
Are you trying to raise the marriage fees because the domestic relations law says up to $10?
Our charter had stated that it was up to the discretion of the city clerk.
The authority to impose a fee in its first place comes from the domestic relations law.
Sure.
Which says not to exceed $10.
Okay. Pull it.
I didn't know if anybody... I thought somebody looked at this.
No, that was it. I didn't get anything from our city attorney, so that's why. It's very good to have you here, Charlie Brown.
And that goes back, what, 100 years?
Well, you're off to be raised, but talk to the state legislature about it.
Can we do divorce fees?
So nobody can charge more than $10 to the state?
Oh, no. Big cities, Syracuse, somebody got special state legislation.
Well, that's why, that's why then our charter is actually written quite wrong, that it says that it's up to the city clerk. So that's actually got to be amended in our city code.
Up to $10.
It didn't say, it doesn't say... It says "to," it doesn't say "up to." It says fees for marriage and license and certificates. A city clerk may increase the fee for a marriage license, including their certificate of marriage registration, to $10. So it doesn't say "up to," it just says "to."
Which was in furtherance of the domestic relations law authorization to charge a fee.
So then I'd actually like to keep this ordinance in there for marriage fees, for marriage license and certificate. I'll discharge the marriage fees and that's got to be updated. And I'll make an amendment on the floor that will strike it and put it back to $10 and say, according to the, what is it? Domestic relations law, you can't charge more than $10.
You don't need to charge any.
Well, it says "to."
So we'll keep the $10.
I mean, your existing...
We want the $10.
Existing code says...
Up to, so we'll change it up to $10. We'll put "up to." Okay. That makes sense.
The city clerk is going to start charging $1?
No, but I mean, it says that if it was up to her discretion, she wasn't aware of that law, then how would she know to do that? You can discharge it and I'll still update number seven.
We're going to discharge this. All right, the next one. Is engineering wages from $100,088 to $85,088, $15,000 change.
I put back that, that back to last year's salaries or wages without any additional increase to pay. That was it. Or any additional higher out of that line.
Next one. Facilities repairs from $40,000 to $20,000, $20,000 change. A rationale decrease to match prior year.
Yeah, and I think this is, this is something that the council has a little discretion on with repair lines. I know that in discussions with, you know, throughout the budget process, these repair lines, some of the things that, that need to be fixed. I think that in trying to, you know, come up with ways to decrease the budget, that was something that I feel that repair lines are something that could have a little, little wiggle room. That's really all I have on rationale on that.
Dennis, Frank. Whose facilities? Who's got the facilities? Who caused them? Is it PPW?
For what, what is it?
Is it engineering? It's AA51621461? Who is that?
I don't know that one.
I mean, who's in charge of that? Is that engineering?
Well, it was always Mike Mahoney that did the facilities. Whatever happened to Mike Warren?
So this... So we don't know who put in the $40,000?
Yeah, it was, it was done within that.
All right, next one is budget amendment liability. This is number four. Count insurance from $475 to $350,000 to $25,000 change.
So I just, this one was a, was a line that I decreased to match the prior year. I haven't gotten any, been able to find any answer to what the change was. I mean, this is something that somebody could explain to me, but looking at, you know, the munis for that. I think that the ski chalet was in there and there was a couple other, a couple others.
Insurance has to go up only because we've had to cover a few things. I mean, Mike Mustard is someone who should handle those. But I do remember him saying he wanted to cover something extra.
Sure, so if you, somebody could give me what that extra was, and I haven't been able... That was something that I guess it wasn't really any particular department, but if Mike Mustard's got something that he has. Yeah. I haven't talked to him.
I know there was something extra, I'm asking you.
Okay, yeah, if they could. And like I said, nothing was in munis to find out or any discussion that I have with anybody. You can hold that one. Yep.
All right, next one is budget amendment liabilities, judges and settlements from $350,000 to $150,000, a change of $200,000.
So this was a, this was a line that the council has used some discretion on over the years. And going through the budget amendments and seeing that there was just a recent transfer of $150,000 out of that line. That was something that, you know, we've decreased in the past and the earth didn't shatter. So, you know, again, I'm trying to find a budget amount and to decrease that amount and to look at the transfer that came out of E and A from last year. That was a line that I felt comfortable taking out of and still leaving them with about $150,000. Sure.
The attorneys actually don't... The auditors always want us to accrue a certain amount in open cases. And the attorneys really don't want to do that because it just kind of rolls forward every year and it's stupid. So I think you probably are going to be, I don't want to decrease it that much, but...
Yeah, and I get that. I mean, and that's another thing that I kind of never liked, that it was aligned under judgments and settlements because it kind of leaves the open, open end discussion of what we have available for, for a certain type of lawsuit. Yeah, and that's something that... Yeah, and that's something that I've never seen, like they've never pointed out specifically, even in the prior years, that we've decreased that align, that that was ever brought up. Yeah, sure, absolutely, absolutely. And like I said, if it wasn't a budget line that we decreased before and didn't have any repercussions on, then that would be something that...
Any input by anyone else?
I was okay with.
No, it'll grab us, it'll grab us, right Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, we're just here to talk about the law of us, but whether or not that's a good idea is a whole nother, whole nother...
It's an estimate, we take a shot. Okay, number six. Okay, number six. These law salaries from, from six hundred and seventy-five thousand to six hundred and twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollar change. Mr. Classmont Testa, would you just be...
Sure, so when Bill Bora was here discussing salaries and increases, this was something that I just didn't feel like he was, had a very strong point in case on. I think that, you know, in discussions with trying to figure out, again, ways to do that, that, you know, we're talking about raising taxes and this was something that I thought was an extreme number, and that's just, again, my opinion for salary increases, so eliminating that amount, that's something that Mayor Galemi's gonna have to make the determination on, on whether or not he's gonna veto it or he's gonna take that extra money that's in that line from previous years and discuss that amongst the law department.
All right, law department, you have anything to say on that?
I think it's a bad idea. I was here to talk about the law. I mean, this is something that technically you're authorized to do, but whether or not it's a good idea is a whole nother thing. Everybody's having trouble hiring lawyers. You'll see the people, the Kirkland County has advertised positions right now for more than what we're paying people, and they're not getting applicants. So I think if you want talent, you gotta pay more.
Just from the mayor's office, it was really a retention number in making sure that we were filling the positions and had the positions at a reasonable rate on that bill.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Going around? All right, next one. Amendment section two eleven dash two, fees for mayor's license and certificate, so we're gonna, we're gonna mix that, right?
I just, I kinda want a little more clarification on that, and I'm not saying that Charlie's right, but I kinda wanna just, I haven't been able to find anything in regards to that, so. Well, I mean, there's a, there's a couple of things, but this one specifically, I don't know why our law would read that, that the mayor, that our city clerk has the authority to increase fees and then that contradicts what happens in state law. I mean, there's a lot of state law that says it, so if Charlie could provide me where it says it, then that would be helpful.
Domestic relations law, section fourteen dash A.
Fourteen dash A, perfect.
City clerk is authorized to charge marriage license fees not to exceed ten dollars.
Perfect.
Has not amended in about a hundred years, probably.
What's the actual law again?
Domestic relations law, section fourteen dash A.
Yeah, and this one says the fee is forty dollars for the license and ten dollars for an additional certificate of marriage registration if needed. Later, it's automatically sent to the clerk, to the applicant, I mean, so I don't, again, we're, we're limits the clerk.
Oh, it's a long section, subdivision...
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go through it.
Subdivision two A.
Sure, I'll go through it. Thank you.
Subdivision two A. Okay, so we're gonna hold that until...
Whenever I see a fee like that, we have the authority to set that fee in.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna put it with this other one here.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it and make your own judgment, so that's what it says.
All right.
I just didn't want you to be adopting something that you have to take back later.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Next one is number nine, budget amendment, police uniform salaries from nine million eight ninety-seven, three oh seven, to nine million seven ninety-six, one fifty-four, a change of one hundred and one thousand, one fifty-three.
If, yeah, if I may touch on this one. This was, you know, we were discussing in E and A today, we did go over the table organization. It does appear that across all of these police lines, the original proposal and budget submitted was about almost two hundred and forty thousand over in salaries that we can't use and account for because they exceed the composition. And that's for simple things, like if somebody retires or if people are promoted, you know, these other lines were left there and it was just, I guess, missed in that, and that's fine, but one of the other things we learned today is with the ARPA money, so five of our police officers, if you guys recall, they will be paid by ARPA until the end of this year. That line, you will see in our original budget proposal, where that three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is deducted from that, but then what they, I think, discovered is that it was being double dipped, so it's also, you will find that on a revenue side, there's a line, I think it's a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So while we are seeing a two hundred and forty thousand dollar in savings, the logic is, well, we need to correct the double dip of the ARPA. I was concerned that that means, you know, that still leaves us at a hundred thousand more in expenses technically, but I guess the logic is that there will be a wash in the sense of fire, healthcare, all the benefits with it, and over time would even out.
The money coming in, in the revenue lines from ARPA is certainly south. It's not even FICA, it's not retirement, it's not anything else. So that I did not put in there.
Right.
I did put in there, and then it'll, it'll wash.
I will be making amendments to these to correct what the table of organization says, and I think we'll proceed with that part tomorrow, but just still, I just want, like, whatever the, whatever salaries we have staffed, whatever, whatever's in there for any line should be the exact number that, as close as we can get. I know it's been said that these are estimates, but there are some numbers we do have concrete answers on, and I think that should be reflected in the budget.
I guess I'm just confused if it's...
Yeah, I mean, so what amendment are you making now?
I think we should still make...
She just told you it's a wash, so what amendment are you making?
Well, why would we leave salary lines in? Like salary lines get raises every year. Those...
That doesn't make any sense.
It does, these are lines that, why not just reflect the exact amount it is? If it's a wash, I don't see what the problem is with amending anything then either.
It's either a wash or it's not.
Well, I personally don't think it is. We don't know yet until it's all in there. I trust our comptroller's office and I appreciate that, and I'm leaning towards that, but at the same time, let's at least, you know, cross our Ts, dot our Is, and...
I'm very confused, because the whole thing was the assumption that the table, because it's actually, I have the floor, so she does not have the floor.
Finish, you're making, you answered her question.
You can finish, I apologize.
But it's not making sense, so I guess I'm gonna have to change it. Listen to me, I'm gonna change from her, 'cause she's not making any sense, and I'm gonna go to Diana. What it needs to, what would need to be amended if that is finished?
But we already said...
Right. It's not rude.
The compliment was wrong. I wanted to...
Come up here, you got a chair, don't you?
Just so that we can, just so that we can hear, because you really can't hear it from the audience, I'm sorry. Move, Bill. No.
Get the boss up here.
We didn't miss you that much, no.
Mr. Williams, I still have your pens. I'm assuming this is yours with the navy on it?
They were garamons. They're all underneath there, if anybody needs them.
Okay, so what...
We changed the...
So what, yeah, well, we didn't change the compliment. The original organizational chart was wrong, because I had, I think I had an extra fire, or, I'm sorry, I do have an extra firefighter in there too, by the way. We'll figure that one out. I had extra police in there, and there was, anyway, definitely Chief Noonan and I went over everything. We went through names, everything. Okay, so some salaries did come out, which reduced it. There's five vacancies, which also helped because they're lower salaries. The problem was, is that I had that salary line and then I took out the ARPA. I took, you know, the ARPA that was coming in, I took it from that bottom line. Shouldn't have done it.
And Diana, if you look at last year's salaries and you increase those, those, so say the, they've got a, they got a pay raise this year, right?
Yes, and that's...
And you multiply that and you look at last year's budget, those numbers, when they, you multiply that by that zero point three two five what the police department had, there was no red flags to see that you were over by a certain amount. So that's been very difficult for me to try and to explain to the rest of the council, so I appreciate you coming here and stating that the table of organization was wrong.
It was.
However, I knew that the salary lines were gonna add up, so I thank you for that.
Actually, Diana, can I touch on that? Wasn't it actually two hundred and forty thousand less in the salaries?
I don't know if it was that.
Like, if you remove the, I mean, I can pull it up too with it, but it was two hundred and forty thousand decrease in the salaries. Remove the ARPA from it, it used to be...
The ARPA was three something.
Yeah, it was ten point...
What are you looking at?
In my mind, it was ten point two million, and then you reduce...
Right, and now, it was, you're right, it was down to probably ten point...
Yes, but it was two hundred and forty thousand dollar difference, which I thought was great and ideally significant, at least in this case, it covered the double dip of that, so that's good, but it was something that I think is noteworthy.
So basically, yeah, what I did is I took out the ARPA, I should not have done that because not realizing that we had put it in on the revenue side. But the revenue side, like I said to the mayor, was, it doesn't, it just includes straight salaries, so it doesn't have their fight getting there, it doesn't have their retirement in there, and retirement is a good twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent of salaries, you know what I mean? So I didn't do the exact numbers, but it was very close. I mean, I told the mayor it's maybe, you know, fifty grand, so is it even worth it?
So in your opinion, you think there wasn't an error made in that?
She just said she knew here. I did, I did have errors, yes, I did, I definitely had errors, and actually...
Did the figures make you come up with a correct...
There's a fireman, there's an extra firefighter, so that's another, that'll be, that's another thing now, the firemen, I didn't realize I have an extra fire EMT. Scary thing is, his name's all next to all of them, so I'm gonna go by, yes, I have the vacancies in there.
But there's only one vacancy.
Oh, there's only one vacancy? Oh, okay, I thought there was two, 'cause we must have had two, that's where it went wrong.
One of them is higher up than Chief Fire Marshal, Fire Captain, so we have...
Oh, I have that.
Right, so that's one.
I think I just had two.
We only have seven.
Fire, fighter, and...
Yeah, when we get to it, we'll...
So Katie, do me a favor.
Yep.
I don't, I don't, we're just gonna beat this one to death, and it's not gonna go anywhere. Get with, get with the comptroller's office maybe tomorrow, before we go any farther. We're just wasting time on it right now, and we gotta, we gotta move on, all right?
Yep, and I think we should skip, yeah, we can skip ten for this reason, and eleven and twelve as well.
And Jack, Councilman, just so people know, you know, there's a lot of people here doing more than their job qualifications say, go above and beyond the call of duty, but this young lady has done that and she's, she's been willing to help out with the budget director stuff as much as my office could, and it's not our job, you know, it's not, and I think we, you know, we make some mistakes, yes, but I just wanted to not go unnoticed the effort this woman has put in.
And Bill...
I mean, they did say to thank me for what I've done lately.
And I think it's, I think it's actually important to know that you're not putting extra money inside the budget to the tune that it's gonna, you know, show up as a red flag in the other one.
Yeah, no.
Well, I mean, you should talk, that's why you should talk to department heads before you go put amendments like this in, because now she has to apologize.
Nobody else apologized.
We're good.
So Diana, so just layman's terms, I wanna make it very simple for anybody listening out there, 'cause believe me, I was listening as a, as a citizen last night and I was lost listening to all this. So in reality, the dollar amount is correct, the, the number of people was, it was a wash. At the end of the day, there's really nothing...
Well, actually, the dollar amount really wasn't correct, because I had, I believe I had someone higher up that, I think I had an extra, wait a minute.
Okay, but at the end of the day...
Anyway, I had a higher up position, it should not have been there, so that can't...
But at the end of the day, when you corrected everything...
Yes.
It's a wash.
It's close to a wash.
Okay, so what are we even talking about this for?
It's close to a wash.
That's my point.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I wouldn't amend anything, is what I'm saying.
You're the, you're the assistant budget director, he's the budget director.
Come out.
Okay, well, whatever.
Don't just say your word, though.
We've gone, we've gone through this, you guys are the number people, we've, over and over, and we're talking about it again. Let's move on.
I really wouldn't recommend.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, Katie, one last...
We can move on with it, it's just, yeah, we'll, I'll talk with the comptroller's office tomorrow, and it matters to me that the numbers are just accurate. I don't care if it even goes up, I do care, ideally that's not the case, but we gotta make sure this budget is on point, so skipping to thirteen.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, the next one, police, next one is number ten, proposed ordinance...
These are all gonna be the same conversation, so we can skip to thirteen.
All right, so which one, stop, please? Which ones are we gonna, which one do you skip with through?
Uh, these are all gonna fall under the same conversation.
From ten through what?
Ten through twelve.
So ten through twelve, and follow that.
So she just said that social security is not included in that number, so those should, ten and twelve should be discharged. If you wanna, and she just said she doesn't recommend...
I'm not discharging anything until we have more conversations on this.
I don't know how many, much more...
Because here, I'll tell you why, we'll go through every detail right now.
No, 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 listen, we're moving on, we're moving on.
Okay, but...
Well, you can discuss...
There is a two hundred and forty thousand dollar difference.
All right, all right.
So I don't know why anybody wants to not talk about that, but...
Well, you're gonna discuss it with the comptroller.
Yes. So street lighting for number thirteen, the rationale...
Let me introduce it.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, street lighting, electric service, one million one hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred thousand, a change of one hundred and fifty thousand. Go ahead.
This was one that we haven't seen, and it's not going to exceed the million dollars threshold here, and thank you to, we swapped out those streetlights for LEDs, we've seen a significant reduction and savings on that. So the goal was to utilize the extra one hundred and fifty thousand, we won't be using for streetlights towards savings for the taxpayers.
Anybody? Yeah, Joe, you're in charge of street lighting. What do you think about this?
I would say is that, as of right now, the last month, we've had a lot of problems with the LEDs, but as far as the money, I haven't got in it enough where I know what is what, so...
And this isn't the repairs or anything on that or contracted services, this is just the actual bill we get for the electrical light.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. Next one, number fourteen, department income tax search fees from thirty thousand to fifty thousand, a positive twenty thousand dollar change. Go ahead.
So this one was actually, it was requested, it used to be thirty-five thousand, they requested thirty thousand, but we did notice that last September, the comptroller's office came to the council, we raised tax search fees from thirty dollars to fifty dollars, so taking that twenty dollar extra per fee, ideally we're hoping for more revenue.
Yeah, we did enact it, I don't know if we've been, going forward, it will be the fifty dollars.
Do you see about a thousand tax search inquiries? Can you actually explain to us what, what that is?
Can you say again what you said, I didn't catch that.
I wanna hear what the tax search inquiries are, and from the math, in prior years, it looked at about a thousand, but I was curious what your thoughts were.
Yeah, about a thousand is, is the average. You know, when somebody buys a house or a property, there's a search to make sure there's no other liens on, any, any type of bank lien or IRS, which a lot of people have, or could have something against you family-wise, but, and that's, it's been thirty dollars forever. We checked around, a lot of places charge fifty, we haven't raised it. Teresa's been here how long? I don't know, she's been thirty since she's been here, so thirty years, it's time to raise it, and we do about a thousand a year with the LED, and so it is a revenue source, and we can easily raise that, for sure.
All right, so we're gonna move that one. Any, anybody else on that?
You gotta turn it, you're gonna be on female.
I know, we have, we have a good about that.
He doesn't need to turn on that one.
All right, so, you guys passed it last year. You passed it last year.
There's no domestic relationship, I think.
No, no. No. Fourteen A did, signed with C. Not what I mean, well, reasonable amount.
All right, folks, we're going back to, to number one as from yesterday, the large pile. Get ready, take a deep breath.
We can't talk about these until they're ready. Yeah. Oh, okay, then we're back.
All right. I got something old right now, this, I don't know why I wrote, wrote about that.
You start, no.
Your fireway one, that one? Oh, I didn't realize you...
Yeah, give me a dirty look. All right, here we go. Number one, proposed ordinance from yesterday, number one, non-property tax items, city tax, sales tax, from nineteen mil seven fifty to twenty mil one sixty-nine five hundred, a change of four hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred.
So with this one, we're actually going to be discharging this one and reintroducing, well, introducing, there is an amendment combining ordinance number one and ordinance number two you see next for the cannabis excess tax, and basically the proposal is the city did a tax projection increase of four point seventy-seven percent, whereas the county did one of five point thirty-two percent, and the goal is, let's make it that five point thirty-two percent, utilize that point fifty-five, because it turns into about a hundred thousand dollars. So we're just looking to match the county, and then we're looking to add this cannabis tax to that as well, because for every three percent of sales, that's an extra tax we are getting from cannabis sales. I have papers for everybody to look at, the average, let's see, we have Saratoga Springs, they have an excess cannabis excess tax for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they, there's Binghamton for two hundred thousand dollars, there is, Schenectady has one in their budget for three hundred thousand dollars. The average is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per store, is what people are expecting and seeing, and we're looking, we have one, we're about to open two, we're hoping for three. My question, as long as the comptroller's office is here, is there a way to, do we know how that line is coming in? 'Cause I see other cities are separating it. Would we be able to do that?
I haven't seen anything, I'll be honest with you, and I'll be totally honest with you, sales tax has been very stagnant, and it's not going on.
And these, they're just taking, they're taking, we don't have any record to go on. They thought all this gambling revenue was gonna come in, it didn't project like they projected it. We're not gonna get the taxes off this cannabis, 'cause it's still cheaper to buy it from We're not gonna get the taxes off this cannabis, cause it's still cheaper to buy it from your neighbor or grow your own, um, than paying the outrageous tax. I think we're missing, if we think we're gonna get a big windfall off this cannabis tax, we're mistaken.
A lot of the buildings are, yeah.
Katie, are you on two?
She complained.
It's going to be one and two, so that's what's being introduced.
We have no track record, we have no track record, we have no idea.
I believe, I put in, when I put in for the sales tax when I did the original budget, I just basically kept it the same as it is this year. I'm not even sure this year's gonna come to fruition, I'll be honest with you.
And it was.
It's very stagnant, but the mayor upped it, cause he did put in for cannabis, so his number, so I think you're, I think you're.
Diana, so we actually.
I think the number's good, but it's gonna come from sales tax, not from cannabis, it's gonna come from nexus.
We, we actually increased our sales tax by two hundred thousand dollars over projection last year, because they increased it, because they increased, um, stormwater, um, work that they wanted to do on the stormwater. So, the, the reason why probably our fees are a little, our, our, our sales tax revenue is down a little bit too, is because last year they increased it in an additional two hundred thousand dollars of what they were gonna get. So on top of the fact that this is already an additional two hundred thousand dollars, they're now taking this to do that. So the county actually gave us a, um, a memo basically saying that they've projected five percent in sales tax revenue.
That would be awesome, I would love that.
And, and, and Bill, and I think that that's, I think that that's even something that I think is, is wishful thinking in, in my perspective. So I think even going up for an additional three, an additional, I don't even know what the total would be with those two combined, but I think that that five percent number is a very high number in, in general.
What was in the original, is it the nineteen that's in the original budget, I'm sorry?
Um, what are you looking for?
Nineteen seven.
Yeah, nineteen seven is what the mayor.
And that was twenty.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I would go much higher.
And, can I butt in for one second?
And I think, and I, again Diana, I think that goes back to like, I mean, obviously, I, I know that in discussion that I don't have any plan on support, I never wanted to support this to begin with. Um, and then combining that even with the sales tax, so I think that if the majority is going to go against, number one, what the Controller's Office is saying, number two, what the mayor's saying, number three, what the, what the county has already done, um, and increase in it anymore, then that's just irresponsible budgeting and I think that that's something that the mayor's gonna have to veto and there won't be an override on that. So that's, that's something that I just, it's, it's just not responsible to do.
All right, so let's go to proposed ordinance number three.
Wait, can I say something about this?
Oh, you go ahead, that's for sure.
So in the budget here, fiscal year twenty-four, we're budgeted for eighteen point, eighteen million, eight hundred and fifty, okay? I know with the fourth quarter hasn't came in, but we're only, after three quarters, we're at eleven, we're at not even eleven million.
No, we're at to about fifteen million.
Now we are, I'm talking on this page right here, okay?
It goes until May thirty first.
Plus, hang on a second, plus, the mayor already put in, increased it by a lot. So how could you wanna increase it more?
That's, that's kind of what, yeah.
Right, I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, the mayor's increases, he's going for cannabis.
I mean, we're gonna be.
Our numbers are close. You're right, though, I agree.
All right, Katie, have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanna explain to people listening at home as well, the sales tax goes from June first to May thirty-first. And again, I just wanna say that the, the county did an actual eight point, it was about one percent increase from their budgeted of last year. It was five point thirty-two percent off of their actuals. And, you know, based off of the county actually comes in now, we're, we average about thirteen point eighty-five percent of that every year. Looking at how they've been steady coming in over their projected budgeted amount, that's where I felt comfortable coming in at this, not four point seventy-seven percent. Cause, you know, it's funny, the, the city's rounding up and the county's rounding down, but it is a hundred thousand dollar difference and that's something I think we should look at. Especially, you know, we have the nexus, the city's never had more going on than ever before, and now with the hospital and nexus and that's, that was my reasoning. And that's why we put this in here, thank you.
All right, Shannon, do you want to say?
No, it was me.
Oh, go ahead.
So what are we doing with one and two, I mean, we got the burning bush over here telling us, what's going on?
You'll see, um, we'll be discharging these and you'll see one that we're reintroducing tonight that combined them with a smaller number, it was a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand.
Who, ask her who's reintroducing this.
All right.
The ones who are sponsored.
Who's, you guys are all sponsoring this, if, as he just told you?
If you flip through your packet, you'll see it at the bottom of the page.
This is a little ridiculous now.
All right, we're gonna look at number three, non-property tax items, parking meters. From zero.
Kane comes up with different numbers.
No, no, it's been, it's already, you guys already have the, the packet for what we are introducing. We're not introducing these ones specifically, we have the people here, I wanna talk about the intent of what this is. So, on to number three.
Number three.
Cause I don't, some people in here were very confused by the idea that TBD was on legislation, even though we were going to amend that for the appropriate lines. So we took that confusion out of the equation, you'll see later on in the packet that we're introducing tonight the correct legislation, you don't even have to amend it and take extra time. So this one, I still wanna talk about parking meters, though. Uh, we are prioritizing, it sounds like the city is prioritizing first, the paid for parking lots. Uh, we were told in a meeting with the mayor, if we get to parking meters, it wouldn't be until possibly the fall. Uh, that our budget, you know, year goes till the end of March. We were looking at, uh, with parking meters, the averages of other cities, this fifty thousand dollars, basically if we did, I did the math on, if we did fifty cents an hour and we only counted six hours a day, even though they go for easily eight hours more, and we only did Monday through Friday, not weekends, and if we only counted like forty-eight weeks a year, not fifty-two, we would still come in for a full year at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's all at the extreme conservative end, so then we kinda just divided that into four if we didn't even get the first three years, uh, three quarters here and fifty thousand would be reasonable at that, but again, it comes down to, uh, what the priorities of the administration are, if they're willing to get these in and start collecting revenue on these sooner than later.
So, so where are the parking meters now?
No, but if we wanna prioritize.
Again, I mean, you're on the Board of V and A, if you put the parking meters in and you wanna generate revenue then, that's an amendment that you can make.
I still have the floor.
Oh.
She has the floor still, Jason?
We did bond for these, of course, and that's another, this bond that's hitting us this year, this is actually accounting for an extra million dollars that we're seeing on our budget right now. It's a million dollars because of, we're finally paying for the bond from the streetlights, it's a bond from the paving, it's a bond from, uh, the, the little, um, TR Procter Park and also parking meters are part of this, we, if we're not going to buy them, then I wanna see it out of that, because why are we paying on this bond on top of it? So, we should prioritize the things that actually make us money and make sure that that gets to the top of the list.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, so did you amend the legislation to reflect your theory for parking meters? Cause I don't think that's been updated since like nineteen sixty-four.
It says, uh, actually to account for, uh, paid parking revenue, it was, um, parking, we didn't use the word parking meters, because, uh, park, parking stations, because we still have the parking lots.
Oh, so there's two different things, okay, so did you legislate that to charge people for it?
What are you saying, the parking lots are already, you can charge people for?
Oh, you do, so now we're just making up a whole new thing and we're just gonna change it to the old fees, I'm very confused.
No, I.
You have to adjust it to reflect the dollar amount that you plan on having in here. And you, yes, parking meters or parking stations, I don't know what you mean, what, what difference does that make? But yours says parking meters, whether it says parking meters or parking stations, there's legislation in the code that has to be reflected to what you plan on doing. And if there's no such things as parking meters as of now, where are you putting this theory in your head of how much money you're going to make?
Uh, well, let's back up, if, when you get a budget that's almost like.
Don't back up until parking meter, cause there is.
If you back, if, we have a budget that's, you know, we're trying to cover eight, over eight million dollars in expenses, this is like a twenty-eight percent tax increase equivalent and you start thinking, man, what revenue are we missing, what is like a surefire easy way to, to jump on this and, you know, maybe there's things that the administration missed. So let's start looking at, again, parking meters and if you don't.
So did you vote for the mayor's eleven million dollar increase the last two years you were on the Council for the budget?
With zero tax increase?
With zero tax increase, you did, so you voted for it, so you knew what was coming. If you knew that you had eleven million dollars in expenditures for your budget over the last two years, that you were at a deficit.
All right.
I mean, come on, I mean, common sense will tell you this problem didn't happen overnight, you supported it.
If, if this doesn't even pass now, the goal is in years moving forward.
But, listen, I'm, I don't wanna lose control of this meeting, all right?
I, I do wanna just.
Stop, Sam, shut up.
The goal is in years moving forward, this will be easily two hundred and fifty thousand a year if we get these parking meters in.
All right, Katie, go ahead.
Charlie, what's your opinion on this?
Well, that.
And the chief, and the chief of staff. Yes.
Yet to be adopted source, cause you're gonna need to adopt something in order to impose parking meters, and that's gonna take time.
That's right.
But you can only do that if you reasonably and in good faith believe that you're going to actually implement that and that the amount that's adjusted is going to account for the fact of when you think you're gonna have this in. And I'll just, for fun, I'll mention very briefly the great solid waste charge fiasco, in which the Council said, oh no, we're gonna have a user fee, so we're only gonna fund half of the garbage company. Well, you get three quarters away through the fiscal year, you don't have a user fee, because everybody's arguing over it and that all ended up with going to state legislature for permission to borrow money and it does as a bond issue, so we can take five years plus interest to pay for that year's garbage. So I say, tread lightly, if you think you're going to have a new revenue source, the best thing is to have it in place before you start counting.
And do we have the parking meters on pallets in the basement?
You still have to pay to put them in.
That's what I'm saying.
What's the cost of putting them in for the first year? That's gotta come off of what you're projecting to make.
This is a, we're in law law.
All right, all right, folks, folks, all right, one, Joe, all right, then that's it, we're gonna move on.
I just have a couple of questions for the Chief of Staff. I think since we last spoke, um, it was the mayor's prerogative to, as we mentioned, first, first bring back payments for the, the surface lots around Union and, and maybe one more, is that right? Can you speak to if there's any updates with that, is that still the administration's point of action here?
The priority of the administration is to secure, um, our surface parking lots, our parking garages and make sure that we're producing the revenue there and that they are also secure, because until we do that, nobody's gonna park on the street, pay for street parking when they can park anywhere they want.
And there, there was also mention of implementation in the fall, is that still an accurate timeline? Can you speak to if there's been any steps taken at this point or what we can expect for, for a timeline just for tracking purposes this fiscal year?
Yeah, I mean, at this, at this point, I mean, we've had several different meetings on parking specifically, um, you know, we certainly want the potential revenue source, um, I think, but the stance still from the administration is that, you know, it's not something we can count on in this fiscal year and that anything that we did produce in this fiscal year, um, would be a bonus more than something that we rely on.
And there's been conversation about last year's Council, the previous Council bonding for the three hundred and ten parking meters. Is that money being used still within the domain of parking, is it used for the surface lots and garages? Can you speak a bit more to that money that was previously bonded for?
My understanding is that, um, no meters have been purchased at this time, um, but there is money allocated for parking specifically that will go to securing the surface lots before, um, parking meters.
Does that include the money that was bonded for, for the parking meters, is that being transferred in a way or maybe that's not the right word, just to get an idea?
I believe that, that money can be utilized for parking as a whole, not specifically to meters.
Okay, so we're looking at, uh, the Union lot and then what was the other garage, I had slipped my mind here.
Um, Union, Washington, I mean, all of them are all in a position that need to be, you know, secure.
Is the, is the plan to implement new stations at the entrances?
Um, each, each one has unique, um.
Let's use Union lot for example, would that be the?
It's a kiosk already.
Yeah.
Um, and that's generated at this time roughly twenty-two thousand dollars.
At the Union lot?
Um, is it Kennedy, no, it can't be Kennedy, no, but yes, no, it's not at the, the hotel, it's at, um.
I, I will, um, greatly admit that my, like, head spins when I'm trying to keep the, all of them straight.
Yeah.
Um, but, we're clearly getting people that are utilizing them that are not paying because they're not secure. Um, we're in situations where we're leaving gates up because we don't have people to attend to them in evening hours or hours during the days to respond when, you know, there's an issue, so there's just a lot of areas where we need to secure that first, um, you know. I, I, yeah, um, I think we're also, we're also seeing situations where, um, we're, we're just losing, you know, maintenance.
So speaking to fees for the actual lots, does the administration have any plans or any upcoming proposals to adjust to those previously agreed upon fees? For example, I think the Union lot is fifty dollars a month, does the administration have plans to, to make proposals to?
Yeah, no, absolutely, I mean, we'd love to, like, like I said, you know, the administration would love to, you know, create revenue off of our parking fees and we just need to shore up, um, basic, basic stuff before that happens. Um, right now, some of our monthly permit holders and stuff, you know, they're holding relatively well, but, you know, the longer they see that half the people in the lot aren't paying because, you know, there's free access to it, um, you know, they're gonna stop doing that as well. I think the other thing too is, um, and another way that should be concerning when you're talking about, you know, your revenue, especially when it's going to parking meters, if you also don't have anybody to enforce, people not paying for parking and stuff like that, which would be a, you know, a greater deal then you're not gonna create that revenue either.
And just one more question, so looking a bit down the line, just to try and get an idea, does the administration have eventual plans after uh, getting the surface lots and garages up and running to, uh, install or implement a parking meter program within the city? Has the administration considered that, uh, down the line after the surface and garage lots get, get taken care of?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so Katie, I think this is a great idea, I think it's just a little premature right now, all right? But I appreciate your enthusiasm on trying to find more revenues for the area, thank you. Uh, the next one is number four, licensing and permits, uh, building permits from five hundred thousand to six hundred, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, uh, we discussed this already before, but you know, uh, it's been said, we didn't hit our numbers this year, but when you look at the actual, uh, packet that our Co-Commissioner Marcus Phillips gave us, you can see how the money is allocated and the numbers we do hit. And this year alone, we have the potential, of course, it's potentials, but that's the point of these estimates, but we're looking at nineteen thirty-three building at Harbor, there's, uh, potential mechanics building Hotel Street, there's potentially DePaul, uh, the Dunlap Building rebuilt is definitely, like, it's on its way. Adrian Terrace rebuild, this could be the parking garage rebuild. I think we have more options in building permits than we have in many years and this would be a good year to project a six hundred thousand instead of five hundred thousand.
So just for re clarification on this line, the line's down by about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars this budgetary year. Again, increasing it to six hundred thousand dollars will also bring in another deficit again, um, because even though we didn't hit our numbers, even if we get up to five hundred thousand dollars, that would be on, that would still be below what we're at now. So I think the number that Marcus Phillips actually put in as the Department had, um, was five hundred thousand dollars and knowing that even five hundred thousand dollars in that line would still run the deficit for this year, I mean, again, you're anticipating revenues that you're not wanting gonna get. So either you're trying to set this administration and yourself up for failure, or you're just gonna continue to vote on legislation that makes zero absolute sense. So, that's all I got on that one.
Where's Marcus Phillips?
Um, I have, I have a comment from Marcus on this. Um, so Marcus responded, I asked him about this. He said, I know of several proposed projects, but I'm not up to speed on their feasibility timelines, et cetera. Some of the projects in this category include, and he listed eleven. You know, if all or most of these projects happen and land in the fiscal year, the six hundred thousand is doable, if not, it's a stretch, if not unlikely altogether. So, um, from coming, so coming from Marcus, he, he seems to think that, you know, going to a six hundred thousand is, you know, hopeful, but not, not a necessarily realistic thing that we can count on.
So he's saying if everything went a hundred percent, you may get to six hundred.
We might get to that.
All right, anyone else? All right, let's move on.
I don't know, what are you doing, you guys are gonna still vote on it after Department, it's gonna be our mayor?
We'll decide.
We, we're voting tomorrow, we have time. I think another part of this is, you know, we, this is a new administration, we don't know what, what, it's, it, a lot of this comes down to how motivated the administration can be and is and what the bandwidth is, we don't know. Uh, no, the American cell buildings and that we have. And that's, as we go on to vacant property registry, this is, you know, speaking of vacant properties, we're not even talking about the garage, the one point five million dollars from the parking garage. That should be sold and that should be revenue we're counting and it's not.
How many times did it piss and, how many times did you sell that?
All right, all right.
Twice.
All right, how many times, you about up to six that I voted in for?
Yeah.
Just twice.
Twice, okay.
So vacant property.
A question to Diana.
We have to go through, she wants to go through.
Jack, can I ask a question to Diana? So, this is, this is an overall question, okay? So, as a controller, so you can put a budget, in my mind, as an estimate, correct? So we can make, we can balance this budget, just put money here, money there, money here, and everything looks good. Kinda like we did for the last eleven years.
At least it lives for.
Okay, kinda like we did for a long time, because everything can make everything look good, until it comes.
Last year was probably the worst.
Okay, so, you are agreeing with me on that then, all right? So we could get guests all we want, we're gonna get two hundred thousand here, but realistically, what are we doing? In the end of the day, what are we doing? We, we, are we giving people a false hope? We, we, are we giving people a false hope that we can get this down, or are we gonna be realistic? And I'm not, I'm not trying to, guess what, I give her all the credit, she did a lot of work, these, I mean, all of it, but in the end, when I'm reading this, it's not making much sense to me.
Some things are set in stone, some are just, you're right, it's an absolute guess.
It's a guess, so if we wanna guess and make us look good, we just put it down here, and then we worry about it next year, right? And I'm asking you, I'm asking you a question, that's, I'm not trying to...
Well, I mean, it's kind of the situation we're in right now, is trying to figure out what was done, you know, some things were just, did not come to fruition, some things came over, some were under.
Right, so, I mean, the main thing with me, I just can't get over it, the sales, and I don't wanna go back to it, the sales tax thing, we're, we're almost $8 million short of this tax, sales tax, well, no, not currently, well, okay, but I'm using, I'm going by this.
You might be a little under the watch.
Okay, but I'm going by this, what this says, and what the fourth quarter has to commit, he raised it almost, what? He raised it, uh, almost 800,000, and you wanna raise it more, and we're not gonna make this year's.
But I thought you decided not to.
No, no, I'm just using that for an example.
Oh, no, they're still raising it, they're gonna propose it, the mayor's just gonna have to veto it.
No, I'm just using that for an example of everything that's going through, when I'm reading all these, 100,000 here, 100,000 there, if this happens, you know?
I mean, this, at this point, you're...
I mean, your aunt could be your uncle, I don't wanna say the whole, how it would go, if, you know what I mean, if.
Well, as a mayor, no.
No, I'm just saying, but I mean, if, if is a big word when it comes to all this stuff, okay.
I would like to speak.
I hit the floor next, but I'll let Vanessa go.
I've been listening to everybody, and we've, and we've been asking all that our department heads and everybody questions, and we all been agreeing with what they're saying. With this, um, building permits, the chief, um, just said that Marcus thinks we could probably get up to 100, to 600,000 dollars. And we still get a lot of sarcasm and everything from some council members, so we're gonna believe some people and say, "Okay," but when another department head says we could possibly get there, we're just gonna brush it off?
Yeah, but that's not what Marcus...
Is that what you're saying?
I think that Marcus put in 500,000 dollars as the department head, and I think he's trying to say this vice-megos.
The Chief of Staff talked to him, he said, when the Chief of Staff talked to him, he said it could possibly go to 600, and we can't accept that?
Um, so I just...
I mean, you're running a deficit this year.
Sam, stop.
Jack, they're looking at you.
Not the man talking, not him talking.
They're looking at you, stop looking at him, look at him.
I think the over, I think the overall tone of what Marcus said is that 600,000 is the risk.
Right.
I mean, sure, you know, he listed 12 properties, 15 properties, that if they all, and some of them, based off a timeline, aren't even close to this fiscal year happening, just from the...
Is he the department head? Is he the department head? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I guess, yeah, I was just gonna go back, Diana, can you kind of explain, because I think there was a little confusion with this year's budget to last year's budget? So you could, you could go back to this year's budget, compared, guys, excuse me, please. Jack, can you get ahold of it? Every time I say something, you, you're quick to jump down my throat, okay? So Diana, I think that what I'm trying to get at is that, there has to be a little understanding from, from last year's budget to this budget year, is that we're running how much of a deficit.
Man, I really can't tell you right now.
So, if our spending only went up an extra $3 million from last year to this year, the total, the total budget, it went from 84 to 87, and there's $7 million in spending, what are we covering? Multiple deficits from last year, and I think that that's kind of what we have to understand.
I think, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, taxes should've been raised a little bit for the last, how many years, even if it was just 2%, because that is a cumulative, you know, revenue, but we also have to understand, things really have gone up this coming fiscal year. I mean, you saw the retirement, that came from Office of State Controller, I'm, it's 20, it's up, police and fire's up 22-something percent, 22 and a half percent, I mean, it's a drop. It's, so I mean, I, are we gonna have a deficit this year? I don't know that yet, it's way too soon to tell.
But did we run a deficit last year?
We did.
Okay, so, if our budget, we never generated any revenue, and we spent an extra $7 million, the chance of us running a, of a deficit this year are pretty, 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 pretty high, too.
It's, I'm hoping not, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping, but, it's kinda crazy to think.
Like I said, it's way too soon to tell.
Sure, thank you.
Katie?
Uh, I just wanna point out, you know, it was a deficit last year, 1.3 million, and for 10 years before that, there were consecutive surpluses.
24.
And it was, Diana, can you tell us what the deficit was last year?
I did it, was, I think it was 1.345, something like...
That was for 23.
22, 23, you're, you're talking about this current fiscal year?
No, because you just said that, that, those numbers weren't in yet, and you thought in hope that we don't hit that, uh, so that's why it was 1.3 million. And anyway, I wanna say with the, with the 84 million, people, okay, somebody just said that we were going up 3 million in expenses, you know, the original proposal of the last year's budget was about 80 million, millions of those dollars were grants that were through the police department, and if you remove those, you remove the safer grant, that's what that difference is, and we don't, I mean, if we wanna talk about a wash, that was the wash. So really, we are looking at, again, $8 million in expenses we are trying to cover. 1 million of that is the extra bond that we have now that's starting this year. Uh, you have 5 million in increase of wages and salaries and retirements, uh, but there are, again, I think we aren't projecting all the revenues, and that's a big part of this as well. If we wanna keep moving on, Jack, I'll let you take the floor back.
All right, so, vacant properties registry, proposed ordinance number five.
Uh, I know it's a matter of legality, people say, uh, one of the things that we have, the properties, that would absolutely hit, uh, what we would be, end up actually presenting is 100,000 dollars, is what we were looking at, and I have 60, about 60 commercial properties here alone, that would get us out 107,000 in revenue, if this was implemented this year. Moving on, and that's not even counting all, like, the small homes or anything else, and moving forward, if people don't pay, that gets accumulated year after year. So now that, I know Law is not listening, well, they're in the middle of a conversation now, but I was curious to hear from them, Law's in vacant registry, but we can...
Charlie.
Charlie, she's had a question. I'm sorry.
It's, uh, we were talking about the vacant registry, and I didn't know if you had, were you familiar with the vacant registry we were trying to implement? It's already in the code for...
It's on the books.
Yes, it's section...
I don't know why it's not been implemented.
Okay, that's where, that was what I understood, too, and I'm thinking it's, it's time to, and I have a list of properties ourselves that we can get started with, so...
Is it codes function?
Brian?
Hang on, hang on. So Marcus's response, um, the issue with enforcing this law has always been that it's significant enough increase in officer and receptionist duties, that it would require a union negotiation and corresponding compensation for performing additional duties, that's what we were told when the law was passed, and that's what it is now. In addition, there are several administrative legal decisions to be made on how exactly enforcement and interpretation will take place. Um, he goes on to assuming for a second all those issues were resolved, um, he looks at about 60,000 in potential revenue, um, but I think this is another one of those situations where, you know, we have to implement it, and there's gonna be a cost to implementing it, and resources to implementing it, so even if, you know, your projection is 100,000, if you're gonna lower it, um, you know, it's still a situation where there are also legalities to it.
I got, I could say something on that, I did talk to Marcus on that myself, and he said that there's a one vacant position there, and now this is Marcus speaking, it's not myself, he said there's one vacant, vacant position there, and he says if you took the, the monies from the vacant position, he said, and you spread that with the, with the other employees there, he said that they would be more than happy to take on that position, and the, the union, and the union would go for it. He says it, it's a real easy, uh, thing to, to, to manage, and he says, all they have to do is sit with the council, sit with the corporation council, put it, put the agreement together, and he says he could get it started right away. So my, my issue is, is, and someone did ask me this, and I, and I didn't, and I don't have a real answer for it, is that, I, what constitutes a specific vacant property that we can, and that was something, something that would have to come from legal, to actually get something from them to find out, and that, that would be one of the issues that I would have to look at.
And I think that ends up being one of the, um, bigger discussions, and, and I don't think there really is a definition of what's considered vacant, to, for implementation on this.
Yeah, again, I don't know why it's not been implemented.
Right, and I know there are cities that are using it, that have them right now. Go ahead.
And adding on to that, one of the things is, has there been water in a year, has there been electricity in a year, and you're supposed to hit a certain amount of criteria, so that's how we're defining vacant? I think there was concern of if this was brought to court, what happens, and making sure that was cleared up, but I, that was just kind of presented in the final straw.
So that, that law, that law was actually voted, voted on, it was a five to four vote, um, we actually didn't discuss this as a body before that law was actually implemented.
We had a whole presentation.
It was introduced, the department heads, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, there was no, it was literally pulled out of committee and said, you know, just as an excuse that they were gonna use it. I think that if you really need, you really wanna implement this law, that it has to be revisited, um, and amended, because I think that, there were several things, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but if I go back and I watch the video, um, there were several things that didn't make sense, um, at the time of implementation, and that went with the fees, and there was a couple of other things. I, you remember, there was, there was a reason that we didn't wanna, want it voted on, and I think it was at the time, it was Frank DeRango, myself, Mark Williamson, Joe, and...
Was it about the taxes?
What's that?
I thought it was like if the fees didn't get...
There was something that, that, there was a lot of things in there that, that the language didn't read correctly, so actually, and this, this is something that, I mean, we can discuss as a body, but the town of New Hartford actually just did a, they actually have a public hearing going on right now for this, for, it's a vacant registry and mortgage tax search, or something along those lines, um, so I actually contacted the town of New Hartford, I think it would be, if we could do something...
You did?
I did, she sent, she sent me the legislation, so I gotta go through it, I'm waiting for them to have their public hearing and actually vote on it, because I think that that's something that, you know, a sister city to ours, like the, you know, even though it's a town, those, a lot of the, the language in there that I read, it could be implemented as a municipality, um, so I think that that's something that we could go by and, you know, maybe see what fees that they have budgeted, and so on and so forth, so I would, I would suggest repealing that and maybe looking at something further, because there was a lot in there that didn't make sense.
Jack, I just got a question.
Okay.
One, not about the, I thought through the judge's emails and everything, explained to us that we don't have the authority to put any money in a to-be-determined line.
You know.
So why are we doing this?
This is just because we're going to be talking about it and introducing the corrected version tonight, this is going to go into compliance fees.
But just, so they're just increasing another line that doesn't already have these fees in there, so now they're changing it from a, they're changing, they're not, it's not gonna be a vacant property registry account, they're taking another account for departmental income and increasing that, so you're not even gonna know what line that is.
Okay, so I don't care about that, but if they're doing that, what are we talking about this for?
It's going to be the same thing, and we're running out of time.
Is an E&amp;A member, Joe? Again, this is why I suggested several times that she introduce these as an E&amp;A, because these are line items that should be separate in the budget, so when you're complaining about the mayor combining certain things with inside the budget, and you're doing the same thing yourself, and not separating them, like the police special services and so on and so forth, you're doing the same thing, so again, contradicting yourselves, so if you just, as the Board of E&amp;A member, introduce that, okay, instead of us having to-be-determined accounts and increasing lines and decreasing lines, that shouldn't be added to those accounts, this is the problem that we're running into.
Are we all set with the filibuster? Because I can speak to what I did.
So, I think that, Joe, to answer your question, that's not a to-be-determined account, they're gonna just increase another account.
Let's move on.
That's literally it.
All right, the next one is, uh, the mayor's contracted services, proposed ordinance number nine, from 18.5 to 5,000, 13,500 change.
Um, we can go through these, I was wondering if the room had any appetite to jump to the end and talk about healthcare, while we have all the department heads here, and, uh, we, we went through these ones line by line, I don't know why we're going through these ones again, and I think healthcare is one of our biggest expenses and what we should really highlight, would anybody have a problem with that?
Which one is it?
Uh, it's, I'm gonna ask you to take out what's in the, in the packet for tonight that we're voting on.
Say again?
It's, the last two are going to be discharged, but what is in the packet tonight that will be voted on is really what we need to discuss as a body together.
We're not gonna be voting on anything tonight.
We're going to be introducing a set into committee tonight, and that's my concern.
So what do we, what do we, what are we moving on to?
So in your packet tonight, it's number 16.
So first of all, you can't even discuss it.
We don't have the packet, we don't have the new packet.
You, you don't have, oh my god!
Well, we got them last night, so, here's my thing, I, she can please leave, uh, we're gonna talk about healthcare, and I can either amend this that we currently have for number 57, or we're gonna talk about number, it was, I believe, 56 for fire, pulling it up.
Katie, is this anything that's in there right now?
Yes, it is, it's number 56. So currently, we have two amendments that we will be technically discharging, but it's on the top, I don't have to discharge, we could amend every single line on this to correct it to what we're gonna say. And basically, what we're gonna be amending on 56 here, fire employee benefits medical, this is what we were discussing. Currently, year-to-date, as of March 7th, we are at 2.9 million. We are budgeted for 4.4 million. I've been asking, is this something where we will hit, you know, 1.5 million in three weeks?
Okay.
And I wanted Diana to speak to this while we're all here, so that's why I'm jumping the gun on this, so, yeah, please, Diana.
Are you guys okay?
Go ahead, please.
I thought there was number 16, so that's why I was trying to get the information here.
I've got, yeah, I've got, I've got both.
Sam, please.
Whatever, okay, first of all, fire, it's, it is very possible, it is a little over budget, I don't think it's that much over budget, um, there is still, I have not booked, you got, I have to book March, right now, fire alone is about 200,000 dollars, and I don't have all of March's bills, there's also gonna be runoff, the fire might be a little over budget, however, police is, I'm sorry, might be under budget, police is over budget, about 600,000 dollars right now, so I think if you're, I, I don't think I would cut any of the healthcare lines, or possibly, you know, flip one with the other, and I can't tell you why, I mean, I certainly can't tell you HIPAA reasons, that, you know, there's some really high claimants in certain departments, and we are on the hook for, we're self-insured, not that that makes it worse, but, um, we're on the hook for up to 200,000 dollars, so...
There's a big lag time between, look, I'm a, naive as it comes with the health insurance, I'm not, you would need to bring a health insurance person in here to really talk about the insurance plan, but there is a lag time of up to at least 90 days for medical submissions to go through, so we're gonna be seeing bills for months for the fiscal year.
Can I have a question? With that, how come we know police is coming in correctly, but not fire healthcare?
I'm not saying police, right now, police is actually over 600,000.
I get that, but I meant with the 90-day lag, so historically speaking...
So if that's gonna be worse, is what I'm saying, because March hasn't even come in yet, not all, I haven't put in March, not everything is in, like you said, there's going to be, I have to, there's gonna be a runoff, as they, they call it, so anything that is billed, or I'm sorry, incurred in March, has to go back to this March, so I mean, it's, I wouldn't cut healthcare.
But this is, we're talking about 1.4 million, this is where I think there's a big discrepancy here, and last year, because this is what happened, when I was looking at the budget from last year, it was, you know, we had like a 200,000 line, and there was 400,000 on the police, and at the bottom, it said 8,000 for self-insurance, one lump sum, so I went to the Comptroller's Office, and I said, "Do we have the actuals?" And that's what I just handed out to everybody, well, Drew did, thank you, and last year, the actual was 3,065,000 dollars, we budgeted for 3.5 million. For whatever reason, this year, we budgeted for 4.4 million. It looks like we're going to come in three point two, three point three million, which is five percent over last year. What would you hit it at?
I think you're going to come in higher than that. I do agree, I think it was a little, the budget was a little high.
But this was from March seventh. And sure, there might be more bills coming in. But if police is, and I've also, I went through, I did the math of every year-to-date budget we've ever had, and I compared it to what was actually the actuals in the end. When you look at February seventh, March seventh, all these dates, we're at the eighty-five to ninety percent mark of what comes in. This is where I'm staying in this range, historically speaking, the last fifteen years of budgets. If there is something completely different, please let me know. But this is astronomical, which seems like a good thing. And I just wish we had more answers on to why it's so much higher.
Can I have the floor? Are you done? So Katie, who did you talk to in the comptroller's office when you got these numbers? Because you went on the radio today and said you talked to somebody in the comptroller's office.
I've been in like, week, like daily.
Okay, so who did you talk to for these numbers?
I got this, I just gave you what I got.
Right, so who did you talk to for these numbers?
Mike Semenaro.
So Mike Semenaro gave you these numbers? Diana, do you know of that?
I was sitting, he was sitting with Mike.
Right, so Mike...
At least that I just handed to everybody.
Does Mike handle these, or do you?
Does Mike, no, I handle them.
We pulled up, we pulled up the bills.
Mike wouldn't be able to give you that information?
Well, Mike did was show her what was actually on our MUNIS system right now.
Right, which anybody could take with some units without talking to you.
I haven't gotten a Blue Cross Blue Shield bill from our new HR person. I've not paid them since December. I don't, she's looking at certain things, so that hasn't gone in. I've already looked at March, the first three weeks of March, and I'm already, no offense to the fire, it's like two hundred thousand dollars right now. And there's still a few weeks to go. And you have the runoff, like Chief said, you've got runoff, so it's good.
But one point four million.
I really do think that the budget was a little high. I don't know why I can't attest to that, I didn't do the budget. But I also will say HSAs, now, all fire department are getting HSAs. What used to be around three hundred thousand is now going to be over five hundred thousand. So you've got to put that into account as well.
So I would just say from my night, very, not well-informed perspective and a couple of the healthcare meetings I've sat in, I would be very hesitant to chop a lot of money out of these lines right now.
I, looking at this, nobody can...
I can have the floor, Katie? No, I'm not done. I still have the floor.
It's my, here's the other part.
Oh, so she can have it for twenty minutes. So when I make sense, you don't want to hear it? Because I'm asking, so if you didn't get these numbers from Diana, and Diana's the one that handles the medical, and she's telling you that these numbers are inaccurate of what you're proposing to cut, why are we still talking about this?
The MUNIS screenshot we all have.
I don't want the MUNIS screenshot.
Well, okay, then you don't want any number. You just don't want to lower the taxes.
No, because guess what? If I got, if I'm going to talk about the medical, I'm going to go talk to Dan and not Mike Semenaro. Because obviously, Mike Semenaro's been feeding you some wrong information there, Katie.
I think Mike is just giving her what's actually...
We're just trying to get the numbers.
Don't wonder where you don't say that you've been talking to people about these medical lines.
I just, I just don't, I feel very uncomfortable. I mean, like I said, I think you might be able to chop fire a little bit, but police is going to have to go.
Here's the other thing.
Yeah, so like, I was about to say, so police is, police is way over.
I want to add that general's way under as well, not way, but it is also.
Joe, please.
But that's going to come in, I actually did an estimate, that's probably going to come in pretty close.
Thank you, just to really break this down so I understand everything. So the sheet we were given, the actual, the two point nine million, is that the number as of March seventh or eighth that we're looking at?
It's probably, yeah, probably. It's probably what's on our system right now. I didn't, I honestly looked at it.
Now, is this the number that has accrued or has been paid?
No, that's just what's been paid. But you've got to remember that I still have January, February, March of Blue Cross Blue Shields or HRA payments. I also have whatever HRA has come through, which like I said, I've only gotten three of those. I should have three more, and that's already at two hundred thousand for fire. I did look at that. And I, the HSAs now, I'm, obviously, they won't be booked in this year, but you have to budget for it next year, and those HSAs have gone off. There's more firemen, they're out switching to HSA, so now, you know, that's a pre-funded thing.
Just to specifically talk about this fire line, eight zero three. I wasn't on the council last year, but I made an effort to listen to last year's budget meeting regarding this fire line. Now, my understanding was, at that time, there was a question about self-insurance versus commercial insurance on the fire department. Because I think by December of two thousand and twenty-three, there had to be an agreement in place between the fire department and the city, the union, I should say. That's my understanding. Now, when we're talking about these numbers and trying to figure out the four point nine million dollars that was requested for next fiscal year, starting April first, comparing it to the revised two thousand and twenty-four budget, and why at this point, we're at the two point nine million as of the sheet of paper, just working through these numbers. Now, was there any indication, and I'm just referring to these budget meetings that I was listening to from last year? It seemed to be that the fire line may have been increased for the possibility of a contract between the union and the city not being reached. So my understanding is, in that case, there would actually be more payment compared to the self-insurance fund. So that's, as I worked through these numbers, as I worked through last year's budget meetings when we had a full-time budget director, that seemed to be the implication that I heard.
Yeah, it could very possibly be.
So could there be a possibility here that there was money set aside for the possibility, again, that the union and the city didn't reach a contract? And then in that case, the city would be on the hook for a lot more money if the fire department had to go to commercial insurance versus self-insurance?
Yeah, honestly, I mean, I can't speak to the former budget director. I don't know how she, how she came up with these numbers, I really don't. And all I really did, just for initial budget purposes, was take that number at ten percent. But then lately, I've gone through and I'm trying to balance it a little bit more, just to make it more realistic. And like I said, I do think the fire might be over.
Sure, and...
But the police is...
And again, my indication for anyone on the council here, who was on the council last year, that March first, two thousand and twenty-three budget meeting, when the former budget director came in and explained the possibility that the union and the city would not reach an agreement, and therefore, the health insurance may be much higher if that weren't to happen. So at least from what was stated at that meeting, I was under the impression that that line was higher to account for the possibility that an agreement wouldn't have been reached, in which case, the health insurance bill would have been a lot higher. Members who were on the council at the time may be able to speak to that more, who were there asking questions, but that's at least my understanding from watching the videos.
Yeah, I mean, it could be possible.
Guys, we, so...
All right, this is what's going to happen now. It's five thirty. We have contractual lawful agreement with the press. So we're going to have to stop this meeting and continue it another time.
Are you guys okay if I leave?
You may go home.
Diana, Diana, I mean, I think that there is some more. I think the fire department, the decrease for the fire department, they're trying to take money away from that too, for the salary lines.
Actually, Katie is right, I think there is one extra fire person in there, so I'm going to have to go through person by person.
Just like you did with the police department?
We do have two vacancies. Yes, Ed and I, we're all, we're all moved there.
Right, so a few councils... You didn't, it was a...
Oh, so it's a chief fireman, isn't it? Is there somebody?
There's somebody as a provisional.
We're going to start fifteen minutes? We're going to take a fifteen minute break here, and you guys could decide what you want to do.
Yeah, five forty-five.
To order, city clerks will call roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Fitar, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Klassamo, Testa, La Medico, Drew, is he all present?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance with a moment of silence for deceased members of the county council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its liberty and republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Fifteen. Departmental police special services, three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, a three hundred thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed? Commit.
I don't, went to sixteen right off the bat.
A motion to introduce ordinance number sixteen.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Fire employment benefits, medical, four million, nine hundred eight thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars, to three million, six hundred fifty thousand, a change of one million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. Motion to commit.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll be voting again.
Is this, any opposed?
Yep.
Okay.
Take your vote, please.
Take your votes.
Katie, we're getting rid of this, right, you say?
No, we're leaving this one in until I talk with Diana Moore tomorrow.
Five yeas to commit.
Motion to introduce ordinance number seventeen.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Fire line salaries, nine million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, to nine million, five hundred forty thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars, a negative fifty-six thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Have votes, please.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce ordinance number eighteen.
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Fire line, social security, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars, to eight hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars, a change of four thousand, three hundred thirty dollars. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second. Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Votes, please.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance number nineteen.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Yep. Police administration, social security, thirty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars, to thirty-one thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, a four thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollar change. Motion to commit. Second. Opposed? Votes, please.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce ordinance number twenty.
Motion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
For the amendments of twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, um, this, this one, I think that our city attorney's gonna have to clarify. So, the, the real property tax is something that's calculated by the comptroller's office once this number comes as, comes to fruition, and those are, those are inputted within the budget. Even if the mayor were to veto these, it would put it back to a line, so I don't know what the, what the point of these amendments are. Because you would have to already, you would already have to make this amendment in order to vote on it, to know your tax calculation. So, I, I guess, I don't know what the point of this.
So, we'll introduce it, and then you guys make the decision if you want it in committee or...
Wait, but there again, they're too...
Judge, can I get your...
If I can, if I can.
Yes.
You can introduce it, but that's not a number that the council fixes. That number, the levy, comes from, you add up the expenditures, and you add up all of the revenues other than taxes, and you subtract one from the other, and that's the tax levy.
Yes.
And that number changes every time you adopt amendment, every time the mayor vetoes something, every time you override it, everything, that number changes. It's, it's automatically computed, and either, yeah, and that number's plugged in after everything else is done, as a result of the mathematical formula. So, it's not really something that the council votes on directly.
And, Mr. President...
You vote on it indirectly by whatever changes you make in the meantime.
Judge, you want a comment? Please.
I agree with county council.
Mr. President, if I can speak on that as well?
I think the, the TBD, I, I don't think that that is something you, you do.
Right.
It's so highly speculative, I don't think it's an enforced amendment. I, I, as soon as I read twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two...
Twenty-three.
And, uh...
And twenty-one, twenty-two.
And twenty-three.
I can't tell you not to introduce it, but you don't vote on it.
Well, we have no intention...
The judge has the floor right now.
TBD is not a legitimate amendment to the budget, and I agree with Mr. Brown, we talked about that extensively in the weeks preceding this, these meetings, that correct, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, did we discuss all these matters before?
Pardon me?
We discussed these matters with TBD.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We agreed on the two adjournments, that it's not a correct designation. I put that over there so they could read the board.
That's okay.
That's all I have to say on that. Of course, again, Mr. Brown and I are not voting on this budget. We only make recommendations. If you wish to introduce them, you may, and they go where they go.
Thank you, Judge.
That's not our province.
Councilwoman Aylo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the TBD, we would, of course, never vote on it as is. It was under the understanding that the comptroller would be here tomorrow calculating the numbers of what amendments are passed, and then this would be amended to reflect that. A big concern that we've had over and over is that any savings we make, the mayor doesn't have interest in actually reducing, using those savings to reduce the taxes, but would use it, use it at his discretion to only reduce the general fund savings. And, a lot of these amendments are being made with the taxpayers in mind, and this is where we want to leave room for this to be amended correctly tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not a number that, that doesn't even reflect that.
Again, the TBD will be...
Do we have a motion to commit?
Can, can I say something on that?
Yes.
We're not gonna go anywhere with it. Let's, let's just get rid of it.
Let's just get rid of it tomorrow. I'd rather introduce it now, just in case. If that's, if it's just a matter of...
I don't understand why we're getting it if, if, if it's...
Because the number's actually not that hard to calculate. I have like fourteen different options of what it'll be. We already have the estimate of number, based on tomorrow. Give me two seconds, we will already know and amend these directly with whatever is passed. There's every scenario here. I have the spreadsheet ready to go of what the percentage will be, and based off of the tax levy formula. So, it's not hard. People are acting like it's rocket science, but it's not, and we should take the opportunity to amend it.
So, I'll introduce it, and you guys...
Well, I'd like to get, I'd just like, can, can I get, does that make any sense to you, Charlie?
Yeah, really.
I have...
Why doesn't it?
Well, 'cause you, you don't fix the number.
Who does?
The number is automatic as a result of what you do.
But question, when, okay, so there's three and a half million coming from city reserves, sixteen, which is eleven and a half percent, and then we have sixteen point five percent, which is almost five million dollars coming from taxes. So, we make savings. We want this to reduce the tax levy.
The comptroller will do that for you.
But, the mayor's saying that he's going to use it towards...
The law will do that for you.
And it's not up to the mayor to just put it towards this general fund?
No, it is not.
Okay, that's where we were going.
You do not pick a number that's the tax levy.
How is it...
You do things...
How is it decided?
That result in what the tax levy...
What is the security in that? How, how is it decided what goes to general fund and what goes to the tax levy, though?
You look at the law, and the law says, you take all of your appropriations, and then you subtract from the appropriations all of your estimated revenues other than taxes. The difference is the tax levy.
So, as long as we didn't amend the general fund number?
Right. If you make no amendments at all, then the numbers that are proposed in the annual estimate would be the numbers. Every time you make a change, you adopt a change.
Yep.
It changes that number. Every time the mayor vetoes one of those changes, it changes that number. And then when you override it, you don't, it changes that number. That number is not known until after the whole process is done.
Sure.
And it's not something you set, it's something that results from the process.
Well, in that case, I appreciate that that's the definition of that, so I'm planning to discharge.
Councilman Fitar?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
I think we should just pull...
I wanna hear...
Yeah, Councilman Fitar has the floor.
I apologize, go ahead, Joe.
Just one question, incorporation council answered, I just wanted to be crystal clear. If this council were to, let's say, just throwing a number out there, make a million dollars in proposed amendments, that one million dollars, if the end of the budget passed and went through, it would only be able to be taken from the proposed tax levy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to discharge?
Make a motion.
You don't, you don't have to discharge, they haven't been introduced. They just don't introduce them.
I'm conscious.
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
And twenty-three.
Well, just from my own knowledge, are we putting in or we pulling it?
We're not touching it, we're pulling it.
We're pulling it, okay. Katie, I appreciate you trying to do that, and, and it is a good idea.
I'm glad that that's clear, yeah.
If it's not gonna work, then we're streamlining, we're pulling them.
Guys, we're on...
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'm glad you...
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty-one? Twenty-two?
No.
Twenty-three?
No.
Yep.
So, it's twenty-two through, through twenty-three.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
And twenty-three.
One through twenty-three.
Yeah, you guys have it right in front of you.
Zero through twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Got it.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance number A.
Motion.
Letter A. Letter A.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Now that we're doing this, can I, can we also discharge number one, so that we don't have multiple pieces in there?
And this one, this is introduced now? Yes.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. So, one, two, three, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Once we get through these, I'll definitely discharge.
So, also amendments one through eight also have to be discharged?
Yep.
Your original amendments. So, what, in the, in committee?
Ordinance one dated two twenty-eight.
Yep, ordinance dated one, two twenty-eight, through eight, of two twenty-eight have to be discharged. So that you don't have duplicate in your packets, and then you're only gonna go through A through H.
Well, I wanna make sure these are introduced first, and then we'll discharge.
Okay.
Katie, you have five votes, they're gonna be introduced.
Well, then, just keep going through, we're in order.
So, Katie, Councilwoman Aylo, you want a motion to introduce letter A?
Yes.
Okay. Jack, your second. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed?
Line them up.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance B.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, miscellaneous revenue, revenue, ten thousand to sixty thousand, fifty thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second.
I think this is a very good one.
Any opposed?
You gotta vote on it, Rich.
Votes, please.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce C.
Motion.
Departmental income compliance fees, five hundred dollars to a hundred thousand, a ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Votes, please.
Five yeas committed.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance D.
Make a motion. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Playground, social security, seventy-two thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars, to fifteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars, a fifty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I think that if there's, there was no other discrepancy in this one, might as well just vote to get this one out of the way, um, tonight. I think this one, this will be unanimous. Obviously, there was a, there was an error in, in computing, though, so just, let's, let's get one amendment out of the way.
For playgrounds, social security?
Yep.
Um, make a motion to vote?
Make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Nine yeas adopted.
One down, four hundred and seventy to go.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance E.
Motion.
Second. Corporation council, contracted services, a hundred eighty thousand to a hundred sixty thousand, a twenty thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed? Motion to introduce proposed ordinance F.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. City court, electric service, seventy-five thousand to ten thousand, a sixty-five thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed? Motion to introduce proposed ordinance G.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Mr. President, so this one is gonna have to be amended, and I think that Charlie Brown, um...
Can I amend this one before?
Wait, so I think that before you make an amendment, I think that Charlie's gonna have to explain, because I think that we have to be able to come to a reasonable understanding... to have to explain because I think that we have to be able to come to a reasonable understanding for both the Public Safety Commissioner and the Purchasing Department, what the legality is on behalf of the council and I think that your amendment needs to reflect that, but before you introduce it, you can't do it to a dollar. That is something that needs to be clarified. You ready, Charlie?
I think everybody knows that the council does not have the authority to change individual salaries. That's inscribed in Second Circuit Law and also in your charter. And you've been told, you know, we say that, well, you can affect the general salary line, but there are limitations on that. And one of the limitations is when you're talking about a one-person department, if you make any change to the salary line as adopted by E and A, then you're violating Section 74 of the Second Circuit Law, which says E and A determines the salaries of the individual positions. So when you have a one-person department, that's what you're doing. You're trying to do by the back door what you can't do by the front door. So, position of the Corporation Council's office that any change to a one-person department salary is a violation of Section 74 and also your own charter of division.
Charlie, does it say right in there if it's a one-person office, then you can't change it?
It's logic.
Well, it doesn't say that.
It says that you can't change individuals' salaries. E and A has sole authority to set individual salaries. Sole authority meaning unions, everything else and subject to all that other stuff. When you got a one-person department, what are you doing? You got an appropriation of $65,000 for a salary. You change it to $64,000, what have you done? You've reduced the salary for that position by a thousand dollars. Who has the authority to do that? E and A, not the council.
Thank you. Judge Garamone?
That's Palick.
That's Palick versus...
And I already told you...
And Anna versus Common Council.
I don't think the referendum changed Palick. I don't know whether it did or not, but I said for the safer side, I told you and I did not. I give you my legal opinion like Charlie did. I wouldn't do what you did here because it's a one item thing and that's what Palick's all about and I see no reason to fight a lawsuit for one amendment to the budget. Whether or not that position is filled, one person, that's really Board of E and A, that's the table of organization, and I said we would honor the table of organization. I think I made that comment last night and that's where I stand. You do what you wish to do, I'm not a voter.
Thank you, Judge. Counselor, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to talk about some practical considerations and what we could see may happen with this. Now, what stops E and A from taking five departments with two people and splitting it into 10 departments with one person to insulate itself from common council review during an annual estimate? Because that seems to be the potential danger here, where you have several departments with two or three individuals and E and A says, well, the council can't touch individual departments, so let's split them into 15 to 20 individual departments and now they're individual salary lines and thus E and A has insulated itself from common council review during this entire process.
What's to stop E and A from doing that? Well, common sense, organizational efficiency, the fact that there just aren't that many positions you can do that with, the fact that most of those positions would be CSCE or some other contractual salary fix that you can't touch anyway.
So is it a possibility, though, for E and A to look through, review, and take departments with more than one person and split them into multiple departments? And based on Palick and that review, common council wouldn't be able to affect the salaries of those departments where one person makes up the entire department? Is there anything stopping E and A from doing that?
Well, first of all, for departments, departments per se, that is the common council's prerogative to create an balanced department. If you're talking about bureaus, again, that's pretty malicious thinking.
Well, I mean, you have to look at the potential for abuse of these single-person departments. I mean, take public safety and the purchasing, for example.
It might be subject to court review as being arbitrary or capricious, 178 proceeding. If it could be proven to be done for the purpose of doing something otherwise unlawful, then that could be subject to challenge. It's, you know, hard to deal with hypotheticals.
Sure, I mean, that seems to be kind of a possibility here, where there's several single departments, where there once was one several-person department and just to ensure that the council does retain the authority that statutorily it's meant to retain. And you mentioned trying to find a loophole for the council, you know, it seems like it may be a loophole for E and A.
I suppose theoretically possible, but again, if, there's other limitations. So if, for instance, if it's a position, you couldn't take a position in CSCE that's in the CSCE contract or any union contract and try to make a one-person department out of that, there'd be no reason to, because their salary's fixed by the contract anyway.
So we'd only be talking about non-union positions?
So you're not talking about a whole lot of people.
So you'd be talking about, for example, Public Safety Commissioner, purchasing, I think, is a single person and other non-union positions would be susceptible to something like this happening, something like the example?
Probably budget director, but that's already basically a one-person department. You got purchasing agent, but I don't know, is the purchasing agent in the CSA bargaining unit anyway? Besides, purchasing agent is like police, that's a position the council does control. There just aren't a whole lot of positions that you could do that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was under the impression that there is a distinction between a vacant position and reducing the salary of one individual person, because in 2012, they reduced the salary of a vacant position. I believe you were head of Corporation Council then. Can you speak to what's changed then in this or, because this is a position that doesn't...
What they did was they took, again, there's just, there's other limitations as to what E and A can do on the general salary line. And let me make the big one. The big one is if the salary line is completely funded by CSCE people or any union people, you can't reduce that line. That's contractual, those salaries are contractual and they're bound.
This was another, this was on the common council for the budget. It was a non-union job, that they, it was a vacant position that they reduced because it was.
I'm sorry on that.
This was on, this is in the common council in 2012, it was during the budget, they made an amendment to reduce the salary because it was completely vacant, so why would we fund...
What line was that?
I can, give me a second, go find it. It was in 2012.
It was a multi-person line, though, I'm sure.
No, it wasn't. It was, I want to say it was Public Safety Commissioner.
There aren't many standard personnel lines.
What do you guys want to do with this?
I'm introducing him.
Mr. President, so I just, that's got to clarify because I was on the council in 2012, you were on the council in 2012.
Yeah.
We did not defund the Public Safety Commissioner, that was done through the administration. So, I don't know where that's coming from, but my suggestion to the council would be, based on Charlie's advice and what Judge Garamone concurs with, is that this council appoints a person to the Board of E and A, that person is councilperson Ilo, and laps of that is councilperson Carcon. I think that if you want to do this position and you want to eliminate it totally, that you need to introduce this at the Board of E and A. That's your power and that's why we appointed you to that position. So I think that you need to take that responsibility and introduce this amendment at E and A, which we all, which, oh, I didn't appoint you, but, I didn't vote for you, but that's what you're responsible to do.
I just want to point out, this is a charter position and it can only be abolished by local law, charter, not E and A's.
Don't reduce it to zero, don't reduce it to zero, sorry.
So we have a motion to introduce Public Safety Commissioner, salary $65,000 to $1, $64,999 change. Motion to commit?
Mr. President, I just, I would like to kind of ask my colleagues on the council, like, do you agree that this should be done through E and A? I think that that's, if you were a Board of E and A member, Jack, and you wanted to put the Public Safety Commissioner down and you sat on E and A for a number of years, if we presented this to you and you introduced that and that was something that you had a discussion on as a Board of E and A member, would you do that or would you do that as a councilperson? If you know that you had the authority to do that on E and A and not the authority to do that at the council, that's the same thing that I would be asking you if you were on that board. And I think that that's something that we have to, that we have to understand that that's why we appoint a person to that position.
Well, I think that's a good question, Sam, and, but where I'm sort of stuck at, I think that, we had the referendum, I think, in 2007 where I think that it said that the common council could adjust salary lines and that's where, and that's where, when they rewrote it, it said we could do that. So this is where, and that's a later law than the Second City law when they did that referendum. So this is where I'm a little confused from what the judge is saying and what Charlie's saying, because I did read it and I think it's up to...
You guys got to decide.
I know, but this is important.
Well, we're not going to spend 30 minutes on this topic. Figure it out, guys.
Rocco, it needs to be explained. So what would...
We only got one, we only got one more after that.
Charlie Brown, how many years' experience?
112.
Judge Garamone, how many years' experience?
It's a moving target.
You have all these department heads, you invite them here, and I understand checks and balances. Everything they tell you, you do the opposite. I'm just, I mean, I'm confused by it. Why you're inviting these people here?
I don't understand why we're doing the opposite of everything they said.
Well, pretty much.
I think we took in their opinion on most of everything so far.
Go ahead, Judge.
I want to explain something to my clients, because Mr. LaMedico brought it up. When you read the charter revision, it gave more power to the council, there's a question about that, that's what people voted on, but it mentions sections. Now, there's a way that you change sections of the state law. I don't know that you can change them in the manner that was done because they have to be specifically set up. Now, that's very technical, nobody ever challenged it and that was 37 years ago. So all I'm saying is that that one item that we're talking about did have a judicial review and the judicial review said, one item, that salaries are an item. You can, you can reduce the item in all of the number of salaries, just take the item line and change it. But when you have one individual job and it's the table of organization, you can't do that. And the appellate judge said that and we did say that. And can either Mr. Brown or I tell him that that law was changed by the referendum? I'm saying to you, I have my doubts. He, I think, is more inclined to believe it didn't. I'm not so sure. I just don't think that the one matter is worth all of this discussion. I think it's for the mayor to decide how he's going to review this matter and so the process isn't going to end tonight. I'm just recommending to you that I am more inclined to do what I know is so as opposed to what I don't know is so. If it weren't for Palick, I'd say no, that doesn't apply and the referendum does, but 37 years doesn't mean anything in the law, we have presidents, go back to 1910. So anyway, that's, that's your question. Did we amend 74? I don't think that we really did. There's mention of those sections, there's mention of 71, 72, 73, 74. Am I correct, Mr. Brown? In that proposition? Mention of those?
Oh, that's not part of the statute.
Yeah, I know, but when you amend the state law, you have to, first of all, you have to have the power to do it and secondly, you have to do it differently, specifically. All right.
Thank you, Judge.
So that's all I have to say.
So counsel, what do you guys want to do?
Either put it in committee or do something with it.
My suggestion would be to introduce it to the Board of E and A and I think that we would support councilperson Ilo and that decision as a body. And I think even if we send a letter to the administration, letting them know that we support Ms. Ilo's endeavors to reduce that line down to zero and act on behalf of the council to the administration, that that's something that we see more fit. I think that in your duty and responsibility, that's what we appointed you to do. If you don't want to do that, I think then this body should kind of reconsider who they appointed to the Board of E and A because that's what they're there for.
If I may have the floor? So the point of that is, how do you reconcile the fact that that's not a reduction for the taxpayers today? That's the goal of this. Yes, we can go through that process as well, but the goal is, there's $65,000 that may not be needed that we can reduce this tax levy with. And I want to introduce it tonight because I have questions and I'd love to sit with you tomorrow if you're available, Mr. Brown, because I'm looking at wages that were cut for individual people and it's just, it happened in 2012, so it just doesn't make sense to me why it can't happen tonight and I'd rather just introduce it just in case. And if this isn't the route we decide tomorrow, it doesn't mean we're voting on it, but I'd rather just have it in committee if it's a possibility, like what we're looking at in present.
So it's already introduced, well, so...
Mr. Joyce, it's not. Can Mr. Brown finish, please?
We already introduced it.
It is, okay.
There wasn't a vote for the introduction, because that was proposed, because I think that it should be done through E and A. And I think that Charlie Brown and the judge are both concerned with that, then again, this council has an obligation to do that. And I told you that actually last week, that you should introduce it at the Board of E and A meeting today. So you put yourself on this kind of constraint.
I was busy fixing all the police overages of the $240,000 that was there. Because there was $240,000 over in salaries.
Katie, I'm going to introduce ordinance...
Thank you.
G, again.
Introduce, yes.
Is there a second? No second.
I think we'll sit on that one, Katie. It's not going anywhere.
Motion to introduce proposed ordinance H. We have a second. No second? Was there a first?
That was what we just did, we voted to not introduce it.
Right, so you can't second.
The mayor wants to...
I'm not, okay. I don't feel comfortable discharging anything until after we vote on the whole budget, so I don't know where other people stand, but I don't see why there would be a point to until everything's decided.
Guys, Counselor.
So I think that for confusion purposes, because you already introduced those amendments to keep it more simplified so that we're not talking about A through H, you just discharge because you already introduced them minus the Public Safety Commissioner. You know that you don't have the authority for the motion to do that. I will actually say, I will leave seven and eight in there if you wanted to, but at least get rid of one through, one through six, so that they're not duplicate in the actual packets. So that would be my recommendation to dismiss ordinances numbers one through six of 2/28, 24, so that we can just streamline it in our regular budget, it can be renumbered and the only two extra that we'll have are those Public Safety Commissioner positions. Yes, we will just make it, it's a lot easier instead of having to go through A through H. So that's going to be, I make a motion to dismiss pieces one through eight of 2/28, 24.
Hold on one second.
One through five and then there's nine.
Oh, one through five and nine, right. But then again, these need to be renumbered.
And nine?
What was nine? We just have so many amendments.
Mayor contracted services.
No, yeah, because they introduced it, didn't they?
No, we're not discharging that one.
Okay, so which ones are, so the real, the non-property tax items?
Which one is it?
The miscellaneous revenue, departmental income, Corporation Council, and City Court. Those ones for 2/28, 24.
This is where, okay, this is where I just want you, we did all this, I want to take a moment and just, I'm not saying we're not going to discharge them, but there are about 400 papers on my desk right now and I just want to go through everything. And that's, I understand people don't want that tomorrow, too, but we can make it all organized for tomorrow and even have a plan of what will be discharged, but I just really want to go everything one last time, as long as it's in committee, we haven't had the opportunity...
Okay, actually, I agree with that assessment. I think we should adjourn.
We're going to have a motion to adjourn.
But you can't dismiss those in committee, so it doesn't make a difference, so we're just going to have to worry about it tomorrow.
Yep.
That's fine. I won't argue that.
Motion to adjourn.
We just have two pieces that are the same, with different dates.
Motion to second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We adjourn the committee meeting here, and we're going to go to number nine. Contracted services. And I'll read it. Mayor's contracted services eighteen thousand five hundred to five thousand, change thirteen thousand five hundred.
Yes, the same argument stood of this was, on average, we didn't exceed the five thousand, and I believe the administration has said that they were looking to, you know, go to more conferences and...
Katie, you've got to slow down. I can't understand what you're saying.
Sorry. This was, it's just redundant. We went over this yesterday. Do we all want to, we want to go through all these again?
Well, I think they just need to be kind of explained, so you're going through them, one through fifty-seven again. So this one was actually through NICOM.
Yep.
NICOM's actually been a huge benefactor to the city, and the mayor actually stopped it a while back. And I think that when you're talking about lobbying with other municipalities that are in NICOM, this one specifically, they're talking about increase to state aid, they actually offer the council a number of services. And they actually did for a little bit kind of, you know, say that the city wasn't, no longer included with it, but we have access to all their prior, they'll give you an account if you call NICOM. You can actually log into that account. You can go through all their old conferences, a number of things. So this is one thing that I think is not only a benefit to the administration on behalf of the rest of the mayors in New York State, but also to the council, because you, they offer training, they offer a number of things, so the council can take actual, a lot of advantage of. When I first became a councilperson, I went to a number of conferences through NICOM, and it was very beneficial. So if the council does decide to vote on this, I know that this is something that would be vetoed, because I think the cost outweighs that, and especially, you know, lobbying is, with all their other municipalities with this is important. So that's just kind of my to-do on that.
I just want to add on that. I have the year-to-date expenses, and of course, this is last year, but because the staff already went to NICOM this year, and nothing was ever budgeted on that line, expensed on that line before, we see that NICOM, well, we have about four thousand four hundred dollars in total of charges, and that looks like it's from the beginning of January. So that's where I was hopeful that maybe five thousand was enough for the next NICOM conference.
Several throughout the year.
LaMond, I just want to get back to one thing. We went over all this yesterday.
I agree.
I'm just confused that we're going back over this. And we have, I mean, if there's certain legislation that you want to question because you have the department heads here, you know, we didn't have fire here yesterday, then you ask those questions. I'm just confused that we're going through this packet again.
I have a councilman next to me who has asked me to go through it again.
Okay.
And I'm respecting her...
Yeah.
And I guess it's kind of to see a sentiment. I mean, if they're saying that they're going to vote on all these as a block, I guess there's kind of no point even discussing it anymore. And then we just kind of have to have the opportunity to either vote for them or vote against them. But, I mean, I don't know what the sentiment is, but I think that you've just seen with even the introduction of DLO pieces, that there's a number of things that have been brought up that has changed the tune of the pieces that are actually implementing.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we can have...
...this legislation three times. Am I looking at the one from three twenty, two twenty-eight?
Yes.
Katie, would you like to speak on this?
I think Mr. Carcom wanted to...
So in other words, we got like seventy-two amendments to vote on tomorrow?
Maybe.
Am I somewhere near there?
I think it'll be fifty, but if we, I would love if we could touch on the ones that were introduced, so that we can finally speak on now, that we haven't talked about at all, starting at fifteen for the police contracted services. And when we get through these, like five, we can go back through the, and really hash out everything we talked about yesterday, too.
Well, this is a committee hall, and all ladies do what you want to do, but you've got to decide what you want to do. I'm catching it over here, that you want to go through them, and so you need to decide what you want to do.
Well, hopefully, we could throw some of them out right now, so we don't have to vote on seventy-two of them tomorrow.
If we can touch on ordinance number fifteen for police services while our deputy chief, Ed Noonan, is here, I'd have some questions for him, and that's one we haven't.
Sure.
Would everybody be okay with that?
So has everybody agreed we're going to, we're going to move along, we're going to skip through this, from nine through fourteen, and we're going to go right to fifteen? Does everybody agree on that right now?
I'm not even talking about, no, no. I'm talking about fifteen that we introduced just now tonight, because we haven't touched on that ever, and we're about to go through stuff for a second time, and I'd rather go through things we've never talked about as a committee.
I still stop at nine and start on fifteen from three, fourteen.
Thank you.
Has everybody agreed on that?
It's in your new packet.
All right, you've got to find it.
And it's, you're looking for police services, you'll see three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand on the packet.
All right, I'm going to read it. Departmental police services, from three thousand to six, excuse me, from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, change three hundred thousand. Katie, you got the floor on this?
Yeah, this is one of those, you know, in, back in October, we made a contract with the school, the police are there, we have five to eight a week, and we have receipts. There was, I think, in January was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand we were paid, in February, we were paid a hundred and nine thousand. And I had only put in for three months of the increase, but I was, deputy chief, you could highlight, if you have costs, or if you know any expenses, and, because I know obviously we're not there two months of the year, a year's worth, what do you think it would come in at, is what I was hoping to get information on.
Yep, so we have a contract with Utica City School District to provide eight police officers a day, two are assigned to Donovan, two are assigned to Kennedy, three police officers are assigned to Proctor, approximate, but the total cost per day is four thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars. It's a hundred and eighty days, it's a school year, a hundred and eighty days equates to approximately seven hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. The council has to understand that although that's a revenue, it's directly paid out to those officers that work the overtime, it's an actual net zero as far as, and so it's, the city's a pass-through for this revenue. And so what comes in has to be accounted for going out.
It's a wash.
It's a wash. But to account for that, I don't disagree that you should probably have some type, you know, show it somewhere in the budget line.
Right, because it is something that...
And that's something that the council doesn't have the authority over, once again. And I would suggest to Ms. Ayew, and also the mayor, that this is something that needs to be done through E&amp;A.
How do we have the authority? It's police services line, it exists as a revenue. We already receive income.
Right, but if, what he's suggesting...
He's out. He only got the income because the police officers went to work, they got paid by the city, now the school district gives it back. It's not rocket science.
It's not. That's, I agree.
It's not rocket science. You know, it's like going to the doctor.
Guys...
The doctor tells you to do something, you do what the doctor tells you. Why are we here? We're asking these people, the heavens department, they're telling us, and we want to keep going and going and going.
If I can have the floor back, I just don't understand why on earth, we would not count every penny, whether it's an expense or revenue, and that is what this is. This is, I'm not even talking about, hey, let's hope Nexus has another game that we're going to contract police services for. This is actual contracted. We know exactly how many people are there a day. We can account for this, and we should. We already have, it's already coming out of, we have overtime allotted, and this year we finally exceeded it, because this is covering some of it, but we still, every penny should be documented from this.
So what does this revenue line do to you, do for you, to add three hundred thousand dollars to it?
This is money that's going to come in that can either go into a surplus, or it can go help the taxpayers today.
Deputy chief, is this already, is your police deputy chief, Noonan?
I'm just...
Is this accounted for in your overtime line, that if you increased it by three hundred thousand dollars, or are these expenses paid out? Like, what does this, what does increasing this do?
So it's my belief and understanding that the police special services that has three hundred thousand dollars is not going to now. So this contract started last October. So this police special services line didn't reflect this revenue. This police special services line reflects the revenue that comes in from the auditorium, I believe the Wynn Hospital, Munson, other special contracted services that we provide. We started this in October, there's no revenue line that reflects this, and I believe this money has been coming out of the overtime lines, and then when it's reimbursed by the school district, it goes back into the overtime line. So on a monthly or bimonthly basis, we'll show a huge, significant decrease in our overtime line. And then a month or two later, when they reconcile, that money will go back up. So this would be a way, this is reflective in revenue, I don't know whether you're going to reflect it in the expenditure.
So you have to increase your overtime to reflect that?
If the administration is going to make the decision to take this money out of the overtime line, it has to be reflected in the overtime line.
Right.
Wherever you're going to take it from.
So you can't just increase it as a revenue line, because you don't get it. So what they have to do, because you're running over on your overtime line, is increase your overtime line by three hundred thousand dollars to reflect the three hundred thousand dollars that you had received.
I would say, to be accurate, honestly, I just, I talked to Dr. Davis, she's been a great partner, we have a good, I would say, if you want to be reflective for the entire budget year, I would increase it to about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And then increase your overtime line to about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Then increase the overtime to about eight hundred and twenty thousand.
So it does absolutely nothing.
It tracks.
Right, but you have to, so now, if you're doing this, which you want to keep it as a separate account, what I am suggesting to you is that through E&amp;A, you propose an amendment that separates the police special services line, okay? And you add a separate line to police, the police uniform line, or the police criminal investigation department line. And you increase those revenues, okay, for overtime. When you increase the revenues for the police special services, that is going to be a wash. So the only thing that you're doing is rectifying those accounts, because I think that the police department might be over, what, how many, how much money on your overtime lines?
That's actually what I want to touch on.
Right, so you're still not, you're still at a wash.
You don't know the answer, actually. If we do this, police overtime as is, is way over budgeted. If we take out...
Chief, your police overtime line's over budgeted?
If we take out the police services...
I thought it was under budgeted.
I have the floor. If we take out police services, we aren't hitting the overtime numbers that we did before, and, which is good, that means you're staffing appropriately, that means this is efficient. But either way, an example of this is, if you look at the overtime, here we have, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for police uniform division. This is line A five-three, one-two-three, overtime line one-oh-three. We budgeted two hundred thousand. Year-to-date, we are at three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Yes, I hear you, that is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars over budget. But, right now, in our police services line, we have five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So what we're budgeting for is still, like, we are covering costs, because we are budgeting too much police overtime then. So we can increase it, or we can actually go through and, we don't know these numbers yet, because we don't actually have a separate, and that's where I agree with chief Noonan. But if money's coming in, we should be counting it.
Deputy chief, do you agree with the assessment that you have to increase your overtime line if you're increasing the departmental income for police special services?
Whatever line, so to account for this money coming in, whatever line you're going to take out has to be increased to same amount.
Thank you.
And that is assuming we are starting at the correct zero amount. But if you take that out, then our police expenses for overtime are currently too high, which is fine.
They're under budgeted. They're in the red.
Because we already have police services that we aren't accounting for.
Oh, Christ. And if you don't have those police over, if you don't have those, if you didn't have this in your budget, your police, your overtime would not be over.
Find me in the budget, if we were five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in those police services, find the exact amount that it's over on the expenses for overtime, because that's not there.
I don't know how else to explain that.
I know, I feel the same way with you, too, that's a beautiful thing between us, but that's the expenses...
You know what the good thing is, is that you have the chief agreeing with me.
I don't think...
You have the one here that you're agreeing with me. What you're not understanding is how we were wrong, and that's very painful to try and...
What you're not understanding, we have to go back to the expenses.
I think that we just have them passed by me, and I think that Councilman LaMond, Councilman Williams, Councilman Peters, Councilman Irving, Councilman Carr, Councilman Peter, and Councilman Burmaster have to agree to the assessment that if you increase this police special overtime line, you have to increase the overtime for the police department. It's not a debate.
It shouldn't be. Let's go back to you. The expenses for years past, I want to pull this up, of the police department before we had these astronomical support with police services. It was, hold on, pulling it up. I'm sorry you don't understand, I will try to explain it in other ways. In police uniform division, overtime in two thousand twenty, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars, we came in at ninety-seven thousand dollars. Police overtime in two thousand twenty-one, we came in at fifty-eight thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, we came in at nineteen thousand dollars. It wasn't until this year, we are seeing this overage of a hundred and thirty-six thousand because of this special police services. So in past years...
Read the other overtime line, please.
In past years, we were budgeting two hundred thousand, and we were sometimes only hitting twenty thousand.
Read the other overtime line, please.
The other, I picked the highest overtime one.
That does not reflect the negative amount that you're getting.
That was today. So today's, I said that, so today is, with a hundred and twenty-six thousand, we're at the three hundred and twenty-six thousand out of two hundred thousand. But in past years, there's at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of overtime that we're not touching.
You're talking about one to...
Does anybody else understand this? Because I can show you the spreadsheet.
You're talking about one to...
Okay, let's go over, I don't have the other ones for the budget. It can be criminal investigation, and actually, deputy chief, does criminal investigation touch police services?
So I believe right now, some of the contracted services is coming out of the adults overtime lines.
Are they, just because we're looking for funds to cover the expenses, or, like, are people, like, actual investigators also part of the police?
Yep, so anyone in the department can work those contracted, those contracted services. So investigators work at the school, it's all based on security.
So with this one, we are at, we budgeted two hundred and thirty-five thousand this year, we are at three hundred and two thousand. So it is sixty-seven thousand over. Still, I challenge anybody to do the math and see where this, when we have police services revenue showing this year for five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, that is not equaling the overtime we have. I'm not saying it's a profit, but I'm saying, just, there's a lot of overtime already on the line.
So I, I think what's going on is, I think, whomever, where they want to look at possible overage, they can look at our department overtime, and look at the amount that's been spent yearly. You can't factor in contracted services, and perhaps we haven't reached that overtime amount on an annual basis. I don't know that for sure. But if that's the case, it's not going to be a significant number. It's going to be maybe thirty or forty thousand dollars that we haven't, we budgeted for and haven't gotten, used that overtime. You can't co-mingle the contracted services with the department overtime. Department overtime is last-minute calls, it's homicides, it's police, some special events, St. Patrick's Day, a lot of road races. That city overtime, being any year, is budgeted, I don't know what the budget for overtime is, but you have to look at that separate from contracted services and say, is there, are we not hitting that number?
That's what...
And could that number be reduced?
That's a difference.
And that's, that's something that...
And I agree, there should be a separate line, but, did you have a...
Does that make sense? I don't know how...
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think that it's kind of where my thought process is going on questions. To the extent you know, what percent in the uniform police division line, what percent of overtime is attributable to contracted services, such as the school district contract, versus, okay, okay, because I think that...
Someone's really had to dig into the budget, look at the past budgets prior to the contracted services being co-mangled with the overtime. Look at the overtime line that's budgeted for the department, separate from contracted services, and see if we're getting to that number.
Yeah.
We could short that number, we could exceed that number, but that's where you're going to have to make an amendment to either caught or not caught.
To separate those lines, just to see what's what. Okay, thanks.
I had another question on, is it, I know we are charging these people the overtime hour, but is there any ever a time where somebody's doing their job up to salary and they haven't hit overtime yet, so they're actually coming in at standard pay?
No, so any contracted services is outside, outside the course of their duties, and there being, with the contracted service hourly rate, the seventy-eight fifty dollars, seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents per hour, that's to include salary, fringe, equipment, wear and tear, the officer doesn't get actually paid seventy-eight fifty dollars, it's done by an actuary to come up with that number, to encompass an average for all officers in the department who are eligible to work that service. At the end of the day, we've run numbers before, on a monthly basis, it comes back to plus or minus, it's close to zero, on an average.
How many are budgeted for eight-hour council meetings?
He's not eligible, anyway.
I think one thing with this budget, though, that's frustrating, is I'm holding up a check here, it was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from the Utica City School District, and it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand from January, a hundred and nine thousand for February. And I understand this came from the overtime lines, but for transparency, all these numbers should be documented, in the same way that there were overages in the police salaries that we aren't accounting for, those positions don't exist. The numbers that we're looking at, we shouldn't just be saying it's a wash, they should be documented and tracked.
So why did you do that on E&amp;A?
We have a budget to pass tomorrow, so...
I know, but you had the...
I didn't propose this whole budget, that was the mayor.
You didn't, and you were authority, Katie, and you didn't...
We also have authority to amend expense lines, and to correct these, and that's what we're trying to do, but there's pushback on that.
Let him finish it up. So Katie...
I'm going to do the math on this, and get back to you guys tomorrow, what I think the amendment should come in at, then, looking at the expense lines.
So we're going to drop this till tomorrow, then, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Number sixteen, fire employee benefits.
We already discussed this a bit with Diana while she was here, that's why I jumped a gun on it. This is another one I'm meeting with her tomorrow on, and we'll have more information for you guys tomorrow.
All right, so I'm going to skip sixteen through...
No, seventeen we want to discuss.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we're going to skip now?
No, we're discussing seventeen right now.
Okay, let's skip seventeen now.
Yep, if you look in the table of organization, Diana sat here, and also said that there was an extra firefighter salary. There's ninety firefighter salaries listed in the table of organization. She confirmed it in E&amp;A, Ann said it here on the floor. I don't know why people voted against introducing this into committee, but that's why this fifty-six thousand you take out exists. And if anybody has questions, let me know.
Chief, what's your, chief, what's your complement at right now?
Right now, we're at a hundred and thirty? We should be, our overall complements, one thirty-two, we have two open positions.
Do you have to budget for a hundred and thirty-two positions for contract?
Yes.
Thank you.
And in this position, we have...
Katie, count them.
Yeah, I literally, you want to count them together? I would love that, actually, because we hit ninety, our comptroller sat right here, and she said that we had ninety firefighters. I'm not making this up. I know there's animosity here, but this is the ninetieth one, count them, please. And that's where this is coming from. So we, I know where we're at, and we are, we are not even saying, I understand there's vacant positions, I'm not even touching that money and trying to take it away. I'm taking the money and returning it to the taxpayers of what does not need to be budgeted for, because it doesn't exist legally, there's no ninetieth firefighter.
Do you have ninety firefighters on your complement?
No.
Okay, how many firefighters do you have in your complement?
Eighty-nine.
Okay. But why are there ninety salaries listed? I don't know if you're understanding that point.
Just like you didn't understand when they fixed the table of organization, the salary lines equal out.
No, they don't, they literally don't, and you still don't get that.
Okay, so Diana's wrong on that one, the mayor's wrong on that one.
She, no, she said over and over that they don't equal out. I'm going to talk to the rest of the room, very clearly, the police service, the police lines, that is two hundred and forty thousand dollars less now than the table organization that is in your city budget right now. Just like this fire line, if you subtract this fifty-six thousand dollars, that will be the correct amount of what the salaries will be.
Are you going to sit with Diana tomorrow?
Yes, she already knows that. But she literally, watched this tape back tonight, she said that we are over on the salary line.
So you're going to give us, so you're going to let us know what happens tomorrow on this one?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on.
But I got one question, I got one question.
So, what I would say from the fire department is, we, the budget amount we requested was about a hundred and fifty thousand higher than the mayor requested. Regardless of the number of positions and stuff, we still feel that that's probably a more accurate estimate, because guys get raises throughout the year, guys retire, guys get muster-out money, the salaries, nobody works at the same salary from April first to May thirty-first, or March thirty-first of the following year. So while we were okay losing a hundred and fifty thousand, regardless of the number of positions counted in the TO, another fifty thousand with the three hundred thousand reduction in overtime starts to make us a little nervous, when we already know there's some deficits in some of the other lines. I don't want to speak for the chief, but I think that's kind of how we feel.
Yeah, we're trying not to run short again, is what we're trying to do.
Don't we budget for the salaries, though? That's a little pointless.
We do, but they, so firefighters get steps, they don't all get hired on April first, they don't all retire on April first, and we don't ever account for, because nobody announces their retirement, so when they retire, they get muster-out money for all their vacation, all this comes out of the salary line. So we have a captain who's most likely going to retire this year, he'll get a significant amount of money when he retires, that'll all come out of the salary line. So it's an estimate.
Sure.
We're estimating two other firefighters, too, to retire, and, you know...
I just don't, I understand those concerns, but I don't think it should ever be labeled in as an extra firefighter. And that's where this budget proposed, I think, is a bit of a disaster, and not actually reflective of what the numbers need to be and actually are. I don't even care if... I don't even care if expenses increase, I do, but just it has to be labeled correctly, that's where.
Assistant Chief Noonan, did you have this discussion with Katie prior to this?
No.
Okay, well, she stated yesterday, and that's what's kind of the-
Not about that, it wasn't about this, the food services.
It was about the food services.
Okay, but I just want to make sure there was no other-
We're going to move on on that then, you guys are going to get together on that and work it. All right, next one is eighteen, fire line, social security.
Same logic, we can probably move on.
All right, listen, come tomorrow, have this hammered out. It's either yes or no coming tomorrow.
It's already yes.
I don't want any maybes, because I don't want to go through this again. If you, it's got to be, everybody's got to agree on it, and we'll get through it, okay? But make sure when we get together on this-
If everybody can count in their budget, you will go home tonight and count with the firefighters. You will understand to, and I will come tomorrow with the correct numbers, also confirmed by Diana.
I got one question.
Go ahead.
I mean, are you going to hire another firefighter? You got firefighters, you got an academy coming up, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to hire two this week.
We, there's vacant positions, allegedly, maybe, but this is the ninetieth. We, our complement only allows for eighty-nine, that's why I'm a stickler about this. I'm only taking what is above and beyond.
Can I ask just a general question too? Mentioning the steps throughout the year and the changes in salary throughout the year, is that calculated on the front end before the budget passes? So in other words, if a certain number of employees are going to get that step in September, is that calculated into the overall salary line? So you anticipate that that step is going to occur at that time of year, how does that work? And this is beyond the fire department, just all departments, when calculating the budget, are those type of increases calculated on the front end, when increases may occur at different times of the year?
Right, so to keep it as accurate as possible, we try to, if they're getting it in the front quarter, then we'll count it for this year. If they're getting it towards the end and it doesn't, then their lower salary will be counted. I hate to use the word wash, but that's, again, it's an estimate.
No, just for my understanding throughout the budget process, thank you.
All right, we got nineteen, social security, police administration, from thirty-six, five, eighty-nine to thirty-one, seven, ten. It was a four thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine change.
This was the police relations position, it sounded like when we talked about the actual salary line, we had more support than we've had on the other amendments, and this is the seven point sixty-five percent of social security that matches that salary.
Can I just say something?
Go ahead, Ma.
Just from the mayor's office, it's a position that I understand the person that was in it resigned. However, the opinion of the mayor is that she wasn't the only person in the world that could potentially be in that position. So, I know we're trying to save money, but there was some good that came from that position that the mayor would like to still utilize, but he understands the idea of a cut.
I want to add to that too, though, it's confusing to hear that, and I would like that to be the case, but she was also offered a different position in the, than just that, she was offered, I think, payroll at one point. And it's just, it was, doesn't seem-
Those two conversations were not in relation with each other.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. What, propose A, we're going to go through A through D again, or was it going to go through? The city stacks, non-property tax.
If, I think somebody should just, if you have questions on any of the others, we already discussed all these. If somebody specifically has something, then we should pull it.
Which ones are done?
We've gone through everything officially now.
Well, I think Marcus is here, and he's been waiting patiently.
Where is he?
Marcus!
Come on down.
So with regards to the two codes, related ordinances.
Explain them, which ones are talking about?
So the first one was increasing building projections, building permit projections, one hundred thousand dollars. Okay, and there was two points that I came up that I wanted to clarify, because there was a lot of, when this conversation was happening, there was a lot of, Marcus told me this, and Marcus said this, and all that. I sent an email to the chief of staff, I spoke to the mayor about appearing tonight and told him I had other obligations. He said, "That sounds more important," but then I came here because I wanted everybody to be clear what I said. I projected in my budget that we would make five hundred thousand dollars from building permits. That's what I put in my budget. I was subsequently asked if I thought we could hit six hundred thousand dollars. Two of the last three fiscal years in my department, we have hit that number, because we've had some big projects, Obelston, Mayrow, Medical Office Building, right? And so I said, "Here are projects that we think are on the horizon," right? There's, I listed, I think he said eleven, maybe thirteen, I listed the projects that, these are what either press conferences, or developers we know, or rumor, or just being part of the administration says are on the horizon. Six hundred thousand dollars is a possibility if the majority of these projects go on. But I don't know the timelines on them. So I would say five hundred thousand dollars would be a reasonable conservative estimate, and six hundred thousand dollars would be an aggressive estimate.
Well, who asked you to move it up to six hundred thousand?
They asked the feasibility of moving it up to five hundred thousand. Well, well, when the mayor, so when the amendment was put in-
For five hundred?
For, from five hundred to six hundred, the mayor's chief of staff sent us out an email and said, "Look at the amendments that are proposed for your departments, and give us an explanation of whether or not you think these amendments could happen." And so I said, "On the optimistic side, I think that if these thirteen projects, if the majority of these thirteen projects come through, that's how you can get to an aggressive estimate."
Yes, but who asked you to move it up a hundred thousand?
The amendment did.
Okay, so I mean, all right, so the first you put the amendment and basically say it was raised up another hundred thousand.
Right, and the mayor said, "Can you respond to this?"
Okay, you just respond.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay.
Well, your figure was five hundred thousand.
The original figure going into the budget was five hundred, I feel like that was the conservative figure. I gave a scenario in which I think we get to the other one, I think that's an aggressive figure. But I just want to be clear with everybody of what I said. Okay, that's the first one, and the second one, and then I'll be done, is the vacant building registry. There's, so there was two things that I heard in regard to that, that I wanted to clarify. One was, why wasn't it implemented before, that was passed before, and what would prohibit us from implementing it now? It is beyond this, it is the union's opinion that it is beyond this, I don't want to speak for the union, but this is what I know as a department head, that is beyond the scope of the work that would normally be entailed in the job description of codes officer. Right, and especially the receptionists that got to keep the database. When the law passed, we said that. It's not so much the administrative issues, the legal issues, we can work through those with corporation counsel and see what we could come through. It's the issue of who negotiates that compensation for the officers. I heard Councilman LaMedico talk about a conversation that we had, where like, hey, you could probably take a vacant salary and negotiate with it, but that's all speculation. You have to, you're going to have to pay the codes officers for that, and you have to have a plan to do it, whether it's through that vacant position or somewhere else, otherwise I can't enforce it. And then we got to work through the legal administrative issues and how we get to enforce it.
You have to change the job description altogether.
Right, and we got to, so that's a negotiation.
Yes.
So if we're going to change your job description, we need to negotiate with you for that.
And can you clarify, does your department want more hours? Do they want the extra work?
Well, so, that's where, and I actually told the mayor this today, because we had a talk, that's where I think it puts, it puts me in a tough position as a boss, and I just tried to come down here and be honest with you guys, and just tell you the way I see things, everything I see it. They always want more duties and more money. So they look at it as an opportunity to get more money. And they're like, "Okay, we'll take more work, this could be an opportunity for us to get more money." So it's hard for me to come down here and say, absolutely, under no circumstances do I want you guys to do this, because I want my guys to make money. I'm just telling you what the inhibitions have been in the past.
So this needs to go away, or is it God's Christmas?
There needs to be a negotiation.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to give an opinion on what the amendment is to do, that's up to you guys.
So, you're on urban renewal with me on that, okay? So I'd like to talk on this a little bit. So I've been hearing that, we all know about the Minnesota case where we don't get, we're going through all that with revenue, so the city can't get revenue selling houses and all that stuff. But I've been hearing that there's three hundred and fifty houses that are in foreclosure, okay? And the reality of it is, this happens every year when it gets to crunch time with people. At the end of the day, you would say when the tax season comes, the city's probably going to grab thirty or forty houses, not close to three hundred and fifty, is that correct?
I would know those numbers, the majority of the people that are in delinquency never get to the foreclosure process.
I'll ask corporation counsel.
That is correct, I don't know the actual figures, but there are most likely a-
And year after year, regardless of tax rate, regardless of anything that goes on, people wait to the last minute, and it's actually three years before they lose their house. And they don't pay their taxes until they say they're going to lose the house. So when you guys come up and say there's three hundred and fifty houses, the end of the day, if we get fifty, that's a lot. I know we've been, I've been on there for four years now.
Yeah, depending on the number, but yes, it's always significantly lower than what we actually are-
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
I guess the one thing that I would say is, as a department, and I think maybe all departments feel this way, but just as codes, when it comes to these two things, I take my revenue projection line seriously, and by mine, not the ones I put out, the ones that you guys put out. So anything you guys put on my department as a projection becomes a milestone that my department is trying to hit. So if I say I can't hit this line, or I can't hit that line, it's not, it's not because I'm not trying. We prioritize our department in order to try to do what you ask us to do. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
I do have a question, I see the chief of staff just came in. So regarding potential negotiations, because the way I understand it from the codes commissioner is it would be outside the scope, vacant property registry would be outside of the scope of active work, and there would be a negotiation between the union. I suppose my question is, does the administration have any, any intention, if this were passed, to negotiate with the union to try and work this out, to utilize what's on the books, or to the extent you could speak to that?
I don't think it should be determined by if this is passed, will the administration act? I think there, it is a priority of the administration to create revenue streams. However, I think it would be irresponsible to create the revenue stream before we have placement on how to actually do that in a real function.
Okay, and I'll ask this way, does the administration have any intention of executing the portion of the charter that allows for this vacant property registry?
I, I would reiterate the fact that it is a priority of the administration to create revenue streams any way we can. So if this is an opportunity, we will, however, there is a lot that needs to happen before we can get to that.
And I guess I just would clarify, I think Marcus said it, when this was initially passed, the administration raised a number of concerns that we had with the ability to enforce it and do what it was supposed to do. And then, you know, there are some things that I don't know that the council necessarily thought of as far as the aftermath of really what it would play out.
Has corporation counsel looked to neighboring municipalities to see if there is a similar piece of legislation on the books and what that looked like?
We have, I mean, we have.
And they came and presented.
Yeah, what did you say?
They came and presented last year.
Yeah, they came and presented a neighboring municipality, I think Schenectady came, or, but here's the thing, Albany, one of them.
I mean, is it a language issue in the actual charter itself?
Look, that'll be up to lawyers the more they go. I mean, if I look at a law, look, the purpose of the vacancy, we talk about it now because we're in budget decision. And I'll, just across, so I talk to codes commissioners all the time, codes conferences, like I do this for a living.
Those sound horrible.
Yeah, they're awful. There's nobody less fun than code staff.
Except the lawyers.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know if you could say this in an official meeting, it's kind of a sausage party. Listen, but the thing is, no, no, you can't, okay? No, the thing is, but when you go there, the purpose of these laws isn't to raise revenue. You can raise revenue off of them, the purpose is to have high enough penalties, and financial penalties, on people that sit on these long dormant vacant properties for years and years and years and years. And it becomes cheaper for them to improve them than to let them sit there. So, everything we're talking about in terms of revenue is nice, but that wouldn't be the goal of our enforcement. We try to hit those numbers, but the goal of our enforcement is to remove blight from the city.
I appreciate that, and just to pivot off of Councilman Beatrice's question regarding foreclosures, to the extent corporation counsel can let us know, what is the current state of foreclosure proceedings given the Hennepin County decision? Waiting for guidance from New York State, or?
So I, so I believe we were holding off on filing until June of this year, based on legislation that was passed with New York State that recommended waiting. I'm not sure the status of that piece of legislation at the moment, but when that first came out, we followed the guidelines that was based on recommendations from NICO and various other entities that we talked to. So I don't know, but I believe we're going to be going forward come, come June with our foreclosure. So this may be a bigger batch of foreclosures, but it won't be most likely those significant.
No, just wondering what the state of those were, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, is there one last anything, one last before I close this up, anybody?
I just think that, I, one last thing, I promise I'll be very grateful.
I should have just asked Sam, would you like to give one last?
Before, before we go, I think that in respect to the budget numbers, that I just asked Drew if he'll renumber them, so that they go one through, whatever, and then leave the alphabet ones there. Just so that they're in order, we're not voting on one, nine, seven, three, just renumber them like one through twenty-four, so that it's easier to do. Is that okay? Does that make sense?
Let me make a motion. You get a motion there? I get a second? All right, we're done.